It's a very special day. You can tell by the way the building tilts on that side. We have a lot of young people. We're honoring three championship teams. First we'll be honoring Grant, then Portland Christian, and then Lincoln. And we're going to be honoring a very special little boy this morning. So we're going to go ahead and begin with the three soccer teams. And I have a proclamation to read. And then I will present the proclamations to the individual teams and take pictures and the commissioners can make comments. And this is the proclamation for our teams. Whereas Portland applauds a rich and exciting soccer culture that attracts people from all walks of life and promoting an exciting environment for all participants. Portlanders everywhere rejoice in the success that our youth and student athletes are achieving in their lives. And Portland encourages our youth and student athletes to thrive and strive for success. And the city of Portland delights in the commitment to school, sport, and community that the student athletes at Lincoln, Grant, and Portland Christian exemplify as well. Coach Michelle Seifow of Lincoln, Coach Manoli Twanaki of Grant, and Coach Aaron Lewis of Portland Christian have all succeeded in using soccer to instill strong and positive life experiences for the kids of our community. Whereas the Lincoln Girls, Grant's Boys, and Portland Christian Boys soccer teams won the 2008 state high school championships and has successfully fostered a program dedicated to excellence for many student athletes to come. Therefore, I, Tom Potter, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2008, to be a day of appreciation for the Lincoln High School Girls, the Grant High School Boys, and Portland Christian Boys soccer teams in Portland. And I encourage all people to observe this day. My chief of staff points out that I said December 19th, but I think everybody knows I already meant November 19th. I think I'm just trying to move ahead to January 1st as quick as I can. So with that, we'll start with the Grant Boys team.
Come on up here, you guys. Say hi to Mustafa down there. He's gonna be competing against you guys some day. Don't worry about it. He's still up somewhere. Alright. There you go. See him? I see him. He won't get picked on, you guys. Thanks for coming. Come on in, you guys. Let's put him in. I'd like to note that most of these young men are taller than the city council members. Yeah. 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 Anybody get their picture? Let's hear it for the generals. Hey, Grant. Okay, Portland Christian, did you want to come up? Yeah. 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 Thank you. Say thank you. What was one of them? This time? So you actually... She only do it like that. It's a lot. Is this generation honor or what? I'm noticing some similarities. No, that's okay. I'll stay right there. Okay. Send my hand for him. Thanks, everyone. Portland Christian Royals. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. I see you guys. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Come on down. Come on down. Come on down. John. Go, girl, soccer. Woo! Gorgeous. Haley in front. Just... For you. Please do a way on the glasses. In case anyone forgot that he's playing his second year in a row. Woo! 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 I'm noticing some similarities. No, that's okay. I'll stay right there. Woo! 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 Portland Christian Royals. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. I see you guys. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Come on down. 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 What a good-looking group of young people. I think you're gonna also enjoy this next part. This is a proclamation for a young man. He's down here in the front row. His name is Mustafa. He's here with his father Ahmed. And he's a very special six-year-old boy. Four years ago, Mustafa was seriously injured in fighting in Fallujah. Mustafa has come to America with his father Ahmed through a program called No More Victims, which brings children injured in the war in Iraq to our country for medical services. Mustafa has received excellent care at Portland Shriners Hospital for Children and Doran Becker's Children's Hospital, and will be going home in just a few weeks. Before I read the proclamation in his honor, I'd also like to recognize Ned Roach, Maxine Fuxen, for starting the Portland chapter of No More Victims. Additionally, I'd say I'd like to thank Celia Heron of the Planning Bureau for bringing this story to our attention. This is a very special day for Mustafa, mostly because he gets to be with these other soccer teams. Mustafa is also a soccer player and was absolutely thrilled to receive some of the memorabilia from one of the teams. So this is the proclamation. Are you ready, Mustafa? Whereas the city of Portland has a tradition of promoting peace, supporting reconciliation, and honoring the greatness of the world's people that touch the hearts and souls of Portland. And U.S. airstrikes in Fallujah four years ago sent a missile into a two-year-old Mustafa's body, severing a leg, tearing up his abdomen, and shattering his and his parents' dreams. After doctors in Fallujah worked against incredible odds, saved Mustafa's life, they can... They cautioned his parents, "Your son came through this surgery, but we can't promise he'll be alive for five minutes from now." And four years later, on September 9th, 2008, this courageous little survivor arrived in Portland in his father's arms through a program called No More Victims. Mustafa has received outstanding care at Doran Becker's Children's Hospital and Shriners Hospital, and as a result, for the first time in four years, he is pain-free and healthier than he has been at any time since that attack four years ago. This beautiful little six-year-old boy brings home to all of us how devastating the human cost of this war truly is. And the treatment and support and love Mustafa has received in Portland has gone a long way to rebuild some of the shattered dreams of a sweet, wonderful child. And people in Portland who have had the privilege of getting to know Mustafa and his father Ahmed have been forever touched in their courage, warmth, and yearning for peace. These newfound friends have nurtured precious seeds of reconciliation and understanding that stretch from Portland to Fallujah with powerful impacts on people in both countries. We are a community that is humbled by the lessons they courageously teach us, that a parent's love will take them on a difficult journey halfway around the world in search of treatment, that the victims of this and every war were really our sisters and brothers, and that building bridges of peace in our troubled world is our highest calling. Now, therefore, I, Tom Potter, Mayor of the City of Portland, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim November 19th, 2008, as an official day of recognition for Mustafa Abed in Portland, and I encourage all people to observe this day. It is our fervent hope that when they return to their family and friends in Iraq, Mustafa and Ahmed will know the city of Portland is committed to doing everything we can to promote and build a more just and peaceful world. Thank you. You know, the more we clap, the more Mustafa clutches his soccer ball closer. I'm sure it's all very nervous, but we also have someone who'd like to make a statement. Could you please come forward? Could you introduce yourself, doctor?
I'm Bahar Butti. I'm an Iraqi resident of Portland. I've been here, granted refuge in Portland, for about a year and a half, and I work in Ochus.
Okay. Could you also maybe speak into one of the microphones so everybody can hear what you say? Thank you very much.
I don't know. Maybe counselors have usually low voice. Anyway, sir, dear sir, I would like, on behalf of me and the Iraqi Society of Oregon and the Iraqi residents of Portland, to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for you on the occasion of declaring the 19th of November a day of recognition of the Iraqi child, Mustafa. The message that you send by words and deeds by this declaration and the initiative of No More Victims Organization to bring Mustafa for treatment inspires us all. Our path is lightened to a day when the hearts and minds of Iraqi and American people will reconcile and work together for peace to our countries and to the world. And I wish that the city of Portland moves toward winning with the city of Fallujah. The words of your message represent the true spirit that was instilled in the American Constitution by the American pioneers. It is the spirit that recognizes the greatness of humanity, promotes peace through justice, equality, and compassion. This is the spirit that can make America the leading model of the globalized world of the 21st century. May the blessings and peace of God be upon you and upon everyone who makes this healing process possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I can also introduce the founder of No More Victims, Mr. Paul Miller. I want to thank our state champions for being here and recognize that this little boy is gonna be competing against you someday in international. And a couple of commissioners want to say things.
Well, it's days like today that we're especially proud to serve up here as city commissioners, and we are humbled by the courage of Mustafa and the achievements of the remarkable young people that are here. And as my colleagues know, I'm something of a soccer nut, and I just wanted to comment about the three teams that we're honoring. First with the Lady Cardinals. At the beginning of the season, the principal at Lincoln met with the team and referred to them as the triple threat at Lincoln. And the principal said, "You're a triple threat because you are outstanding soccer players on the field, you are outstanding students in the classroom, and you are outstanding role models in our community." And I just want to remind people that as great as this team is, two-time defending champions for the state of Oregon, their collective grade point average is 3.75. So these are student athletes in the best sense of the word, and they are tremendous role models, not only at Lincoln but in our broader community. And I had a hunch they'd be successful this year because their new coach, Michelle Seifow, is a transplant from New York. And she's also a graduate of the University of Portland, which has won a few national champions, as many of you know. Next, I want to acknowledge the Grant Generals and my good friend Manoli, and I never try to pronounce his last name there. I'm sorry, I'm still not sure how it's pronounced. But Manoli goes by one word. And Manoli has made a huge difference in our community as a club coach and as the leader of Northeast United, and as well as the men's varsity coach. And as incredible as this accomplishment is, that the generals have won the championship, consider that they do so without having a soccer field to call their own. And as we think about the 10-grade field plan and about future planning around making sure that every young person in our community has access to first-rate facilities, let's remember that this team became state champions without their own field. And as someone who lives in the Grand Park area, I think it's long overdue that we gave them a field, don't you agree? And finally, while I had the great privilege last Saturday of seeing Grant and Lincoln play for the title game at Liberty High School in Hillsborough, I didn't have the chance to see Portland Christian. But what you've done is also remarkable, but I think that you had a special advantage because you had someone upstairs pulling for you throughout this. So let's give all three teams a round of applause for being such great role models in our community.
You know, we also have a Grant graduate on the council, and as Commissioner Leonard often reminds us, it was the best six years of his life.
I was just sitting here minding my own business.
Thank you all very much for being here. Thanks, young folks. City Council will come to order. Carla, please call the roll.
Adams.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Leonard.
Saltzman.
Here.
Potter.
I'd like to remind folks that prior to offering public testimony to City Council, a lobbyist must declare which lobby entity they are authorized to represent. Please read the first communication.
Item 1545, request of Patricia A. Trice to address council regarding family rights.
Could you call her name again, please?
Patricia Trice.
Please read the next communication.
1546, request of Tim Duffy to address council regarding Civic Drive Max Stop.
Repeat the name.
Tim Duffy.
Are you here, Mr. Duffy? Before we proceed with the next communication, I just had a note handed to me that Mustafa's father would like to say thank you. So Ahmed, could you please come forward and... Translator? And if you could sit at that table, that way everybody could hear your voice. And pull the microphone down.
Hi, Mayor. My name is Mohamed Al-Sadi, and I'm his interpreter.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am very happy to meet you.
I am very happy to arrive here to the city of Portland, the city of Rose.
Because you guys are very wonderful people.
You guys reached out and helped me and my son through our crisis.
For the purpose of helping us and putting us through this healing process that has been wonderful.
As much as Mustafa has been suffering the last four years since the date of the injury that he had.
Right now, he is actually acting like a normal kid who's never been injured. That was the first time ever for me to see him as happy as he is right now.
And that's, of course, my thank goes for that, first to the agency who helped me, the No More Victims.
Which is, it was the only one back there in Fallujah who came and rescued us, me, my kid, my whole entire family, and went out and reached for us and tried to pull us through this horrifying, horrible thing that we're dealing with.
But I'm very thankful to Cole, the founder of the No More Victim.
I'm very appreciative to Maxine and Ned, the co-founders of the agency here in Portland.
And I want to thank everybody in the city of Portland. You guys are wonderful people all around. I'm amazed and I'm blown by the generosity and the genuine, sincere, you know, care that you guys have for people who really need help.
And in the name of my country, Iraq, I want to send a message, a message of peace to the wonderful people you are.
And I want you to know, there's thousands of kids in Iraq who's suffering just as much as Mustafa, if not more.
They're waiting hopelessly for somebody to come and help and rescue them, and reach out for them like somebody did for Mustafa.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
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 Hey, thanks. Thank you for all your great work. Thank you for the work.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
He gave me a high five. He knew how to give a high five.
Hi.
Hi, Mustafa.
Liked to see him, so.
Is 1547 the next?
1547.
Yes, please read that.
Request of John Replinger to address council regarding city leaf collection program.
Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes, sir.
Fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Replinger from Southeast Portland. I have provided a written statement as well. The, my basic concern is, particularly as we have more and more cyclists trying to use the streets for alternative modes of commuting and more and more pedestrians, the hazards that are created by leaves in the street are becoming more and more severe. I spent considerable time on this, discussions with commissioners aides and bureau staff, and I'm not satisfied yet with what I've seen, so I'm here to present my case to you. I guess basically the problem is, I feel that the leaf program is unfair, it's being poorly run, it's actually creating additional hazards for those of us trying to use the streets in the city. This fall, my wife and I so far have hauled four loaves of leaves to the leaf depot, as we've paid for the privilege, while our neighbors and in fact, thousands of people in the city are blowing their leaves into the street in apparent violation of the city code. We're out trying to do the right thing and paying for the privilege of that while others create this hazard. I have several specific changes in mind. The first is, change this stuff. Change the door hanger so it says, "It is illegal to put leaves in the street, you may be fined." People are just out there doing it. Put together a hotline so that we can send, we can call in, we can give the addresses, send people letters that say, "It appears that the accumulation of leaves in front of your house is not a natural occurrence. You may not put the leaves in the street, you may be fined." Send the police, it's a traffic safety issue. Send the traffic division out to warn the people who are out there physically. I mean, you can go through the neighborhoods in the late afternoons and the weekends and see dozens of people putting their leaves in the street. Send them out there to warn them that what they're doing is creating a hazard, it's not acceptable. Have some enforcement, do some fines, publicize it. And for goodness sake, make the leaf depot free. I mean, I'm paying to do the right thing, whereas the people who are doing illegal are paying no cost. Or change the whole program, make it like the Snow Park program. Allow people to buy a permit to put the leaves out into the street at a specific time. They buy the permit for 20 bucks, 50 bucks, whatever, put it in their, display it in their window that shows everybody they are a participant in the program. But for goodness sake, let's please do something about the program. It's not working the way it is. It's rewarding the lawbreakers and is putting cyclists and pedestrians at risk.
I appreciate your comments. We're not staying on top of this issue. And your transportation department has had to cut out $48 million over the past four years on an ongoing basis. We are going to be coming forward to the city council with a proposal to create leaf districts where we would, people would be charged on the, probably the garbage bills in leaf districts and that would provide us the resources to stay on top of this issue. What we're proposing though, and ask you to think about, is that we would, for this fee, we would clean up the leaves and that people would put them in the street and then we would clean up from there. We've, we're proposing this and council have an opportunity to think about and consider it based on our study of the issue as well. The option of going out and fining people and doing the kind of enforcement of the existing rules and regulations, we do not find to be tenable as an approach moving forward. So instead, we're going to be providing the service of getting the leaves out of the street and asking people to put them there. That's probably, that will happen next season, not this season. So in the meantime, we're just making do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have to do something.
I agree.
It's not, it's not working. People don't even use their leaf, their leaf pickup. They don't even use their yard debris, put it in the street.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you for your testimony.
Please read item 1548.
Request of Matthew Honeycutt to address council regarding Young Professionals Civic Engagement Month.
Are they here this morning? Good. After Matthew concludes his comments, I have a proclamation to read on their behalf.
First off, thank you, Mayor Potter, Sam, City Council, those of you who've been involved with Young Professionals of Portland over the last three years. Well, we've grown from eight members to over 3,600 members over the last three years. Really, this is an important proclamation for us as Portland is the third highest civically involved city in the country. It's really, really important that us business and young professional here in Portland follow through with the leadership that this greater city has already put forth. This year, we're happy to have over 30 different events to promote civic involvement, professional involvement, and business networking through Young Professionals of Portland. And as you do your proclamation today, we're also happy to announce a new or an additional event that we're putting forth, which will kick off on November 25th at our social event, which will be a toy and canned food drive that will last for four weeks with drop-off locations around the city that we've organized to try and increase our involvement with the city of Portland and all of our members for Young Professionals of Portland. So we thank you guys all for recognizing this is an important month to us and recognizing the young business community that's here in Portland.
I want to thank you and all your constituents for how much you give back to this city. I think you really demonstrate civic leadership and demonstrating the greater good for our community. So thank you very much, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the month of November has been designated Young Professionals Civic Month with the support and leadership of the Young Professionals of Portland, whereas Portland Professional Civic Month has been designated to include young professionals from across our city, from various civic organizations involving thousands of young people, and whereas the volunteer efforts of young professionals during this month show that each individual will have an impact on their community, the experience, education, participation of young professionals during this month, instill a goodwill towards a community in which they live and work, and the variety of needs and opportunities that volunteers can address is large and varied. Young professionals of the city of Portland have proven that they're willing to work hard to give to others and to fix problems in their community. Now therefore, I, Tom Potter, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the city of Rose, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2008, Young Professionals Civic Month in Portland. Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Now that was all of the consent, I mean, the communications. Move to the consent agenda. Any commissioners wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Any commissioners, anybody in this room wish to pull any specific item from the consent agenda? Please call the bill.
Adams.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Please read the 9:30 time, sir.
Item 1549, accept the Small Business Advisory Council annual report to City Council.
Commissioner Adams? Would you like to only read my part?
Go ahead and do your part.
Okay. Well, I am pleased to co-sponsor this presentation with Commissioner Adams. This is the annual report from the Small Business Advisory Council. SBAK's work directly reflects Portland's vision of community involvement in governance and I have consistently been pleased with SBAK's engagement with my office and with the other policymakers in general. As a voice for our small business community, Jackie Babacki-Petersen and her team are striving to keep Portland an economically thriving and culturally rich community. Small business is extremely important to our community and over the course of the last several weeks, I've had the opportunity to visit many small businesses throughout the city and I've learned a lot of things. There are many economic issues that are facing our small businesses that we don't have any control over, but I've also learned there's a number of other things that the city council can and should make every effort to address. I've learned that we can become a champion for our small businesses in a variety of ways. We can fix some of the difficulties that a small business might face when interacting with city bureaucracy, can explore new ideas that will bring new industries to the city. I believe that SBAK has a role in working with the city to advise us and keep us moving forward. I'm proud we've fostered a wonderful working relationship between the SBAK and the city council and I'm confident that this relationship will remain strong in upcoming changes in city leadership. Now pleased to turn it over to Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for co-sponsoring the annual report of SBAK to the city council. It is important progress that we measured together and as the mayor said, important work yet to be done. I want to commend Chair Jackie Babacki-Petersen and the entire SBAK team, Martin as well, for the great work that you've done thus far, including expand the diversity of membership, increase awareness of the efforts, foster closer relationships with city council and our staff, including various bureaus. 50,000 small businesses in Oregon provide 275,000 jobs and we are a city to a higher percentage that relies on the success of small business than most other cities. And as inferred in the mayor's comments as well, people often want to debate what is the status of Portland's business climate and I think our response is, we're always working to make it better. We are rated by Fortune Magazine as the best place to live and launch a business. We're the sixth best rating and that's pretty good. I hope to break, you know, the top two in the next four years. We've adopted the Small Business Bill of Rights exactly one year ago and I'm looking forward to hearing your report and your inspiration of what's going to happen in the year ahead. Jackie.
Thank you very much, that's wonderful. I'm Jackie Babacki-Petersen. I live in Northeast Portland and I'm the chair of the Small Business Advisory Council. And Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much. Your support has been invaluable to us over the last year. I'm going to present a bit of the report with my colleague, our vice chair of SBAK is Martin Madeiras. And we have several of our members who are also present. Andy Fraser, maybe you would stand up as I introduce you. Andy Fraser, Suzanne Vara, who, we couldn't live without Suzanne, it's, she's just a tremendous help, and John Torino of APNBA, who has been just a stalwart member for us as well. As, no, this year, the SBAK celebrated its fifth anniversary and we're pretty thrilled about that. Over the last five years, we've gone from, you know, kind of an idea and a group of people coming together with the best intents about supporting small business to an organization that we feel now is, is very strong, you know, has a strong voice and you've all been a tremendous help in making that happen. Our primary mission continues to be being a unified voice for the small businesses of our city. Back in 2003, when we were formed, the statistics were that there were about 39,000 small businesses in the region, which is businesses of 50 or fewer employees. And by far, most of those are, by the way, microenterprises with five or fewer employees or, you know, one-person businesses. And today, as Commissioner Adams just said, the number is that there are nearly 50,000 of those businesses, which is a spectacular increase over the five years. And we see that that explosion and the formation of small businesses is certainly going to continue by itself, it's going to continue, but also with the economic recession, many, many people are, you know, being laid off and, you know, forming small businesses as a result. We also see that small businesses just continues to be a major driver in our economy. I like to call us the engine of innovation. As bigger businesses get bigger and bigger, they become less able to adapt and be creative and innovate, but our small businesses are just bursting with creativity and ideas and that's where the innovation is coming from. I also like to remind everyone that in economic recession, that small business is actually the ballast in the ship. We're going to keep things on a much more even keel than the, you know, the big businesses that are much more subject to the vagaries of what goes on in the world economy. As we said, this has been an exciting year. About a year ago, we unanimously approved our Bill of Rights and we are continuing to work to promote that, to spread the word of it throughout the city and make it, make small businesses and officials aware of it. When we project or when we write our own opinions, what we do is tie it into the Bill of Rights so that we can promote it as something that we all want to use for how decisions get made. And one of the things that has happened now is that Portland Online is featuring the Bill of Rights right in the front of the page of the business tab. And there's, you know, thanks to Laurel Butman and her wonderful team, on the website, there is a place for businesses to sign in and ratify the Bill of Rights right online, which is terrific. We've been really busy this year. I'm going to read you a list of some of the things that we've worked on or given feedback on. Safe, sound, and green streets, graffiti materials, ordinance, containers in the right-of-way, the Portland Recycles Commercial Plan, Vision Portland, the Portland Plan, the Contract Worker Healthcare Expansion Initiative, the Parks and Recreation System Development Charges, High Performance Green Building Policy, Title 29, and the Sweat-Free Procurement Policy. We're finding ourselves getting very educated about what happens in the city. And along that line, last month, the auditor's office provided an all-day training for SBAK members as well as members of East Portland Chamber, PBA, OWMI, other groups that wanted to attend and really understand the inner workings of the city. So Martin, would you like to talk about what we've been doing?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. First, I am going to speak a little bit about the action items we focused on in 2008 and next I'm going to go into a summary of activities. First, Jackie's absolutely right, the innovation and creativity comes from the small business sector. They're the engines that drive the economy. Innovation, creativity, it's the backbone of every economy. And one thing we focused on in small business interface with the city is this idea of a process. We form an ad hoc committee, working group called the Process Committee, and what we were looking at is how to evaluate ordinances and different regulations that come down, how they impact the broader economy. And this idea actually came from a meeting we had with Commissioner Leonard, when he relayed to us, when he was in the legislature, an economic impact statement always was attached to every piece of legislation. And the city certainly does that as relates to the Office of Management and Finance, OMF, but outward looking, how does, and the question, operative question that we want to ask is, how does this ordinance or this piece of legislation affect jobs, net capital inflow, and the attractiveness to the city, as Commissioner Adams discussed, as far as, you know, where are we, how does this look, excuse me, to the outside? Sorry, I'm a little hoarse today. And so we're developing that. And so, we're developing that process, and now it's an actual committee of SBAQ, and we're trying to think of what's the best, the best way to do that, and we're working through the bureau liaisons to figure out what are the economic impacts on these things and what process should we follow. And our second action item, and it's been mentioned here, is the Small Business Bill of Rights. Whereby, we want it to be a focal point or a, something that's looked at in making policy. And the Bill of Rights, you can read it, but it has things like houses, helping businesses grow, expand, retain jobs, retain success in the city of Portland. And we really believe that people have been looking at it, and on the website, more and more people are getting involved in that process. Another action item we worked on is the web portal enhancement, and thanks to the help of the city, we've had kind of a focal point as far as what the city can do and how the city is enabling small businesses, and we think that was a great project. Again, Jackie mentioned Laurel. And one program we've started to get more and people involved in small business is, while the membership committee has done a great job, and right now, we have 21 members, and we welcome six new people, we have this idea that expands that footprint to the subject matter expert. If someone is going off the committee, if there's someone in the community who's particularly knowledgeable about a subject, a topic, you know, international trade, trade with some partner, transportation, we have created this subject matter expert program where they're invited to our meetings, and they can offer opinions and participate to have, you know, yet another brain solving the problem of economic growth in the city and making the city attractive for small businesses. A very quick summary of activities now. Those were our action items that we focused on in 2008. Summary of activities, first of all, the committees we now currently have are the Communications Committee, which worked on the Portland Online Web Portal Interface we talked about, the Membership Committee, which constantly gets new ideas, new people, new volunteers into the process. SBAQ, of course, is a volunteer organization. And we have the new Small Business Development Committee headed by Dwayne Johnson, who's done a great job at looking at how do we develop and grow these small businesses into viable businesses beyond startup. And some of these businesses are very old Portland family businesses that are in meetings that have been in, doing business in Portland in excess of 70 years, so this is not just a startup group. Cost of Doing Business Committee, we look at various things, and we work with Commissioner Saltzman on the SDC, and we thank him for working with on that. You know, it came out, we had some discussions about it, and finally, he was able to come our way, and we were glad to participate in that process. So, that Cost of Doing Business Committee is essential on, well, what will it cost for a new business to add that extra employee, add that extra facility, do more business? Let's see, we've, we're always updating the succession plan, the bylaws, we had some changes, basically, to better help institutional memory and succession in the organization. We needed some changes as it hadn't been changed since the founding. How many years ago, Jackie?
Five years.
Five years ago. And we have various work groups and committees that we participate in, and in closing, I want to talk about the, how we've kind of developed a community around strategies and problem-solving. A migration from kind of this gadfly, you're not doing enough for business, to, okay, how can we make this better? And I think that's really the organization, it probably happened last year, really turned the corner in that, in this problem-solving. We've contributed substantially to the Small Business Bill of Rights, the Portland Recycles Plan, the Green Building Policy, the creation of the Best Business Sitter, working with OSD, the Safe, Sound &amp; Green Streets Project, which we supported Parks SDC, as I mentioned, the Portland Plan, and the construction impact mitigation on the downtown construction. Thank you very much. I, there's a lot to be done. I work, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Martin Madeiras. I have a small--
We know you.
I have a small law firm right on Pioneer Courthouse Square, and, you know, this construction mitigation, we're doing the right thing. There's plans to accelerate to keep some of these bond-backed fiscal things going on during this economic time we're in, and we really think we're on the right track, and we want to build on that. We want to make, again, as Commissioner Adams said, one of the top-two cities to start and grow a business. And I'd like to give it over to Jackie where she will conclude.
We, when we're looking ahead, as Martin said, we are very pleased that there's really been a shift in SBAQ and that we do feel like we have a partnership with you and with the city for giving, you know, a small business opinion on ideas that are being generated and work that you're trying to do to make Portland a very business-friendly city. And, you know, this has certainly been a year for us to not just give feedback, but to give input and share ideas, and we've had very good dialogue, and that's been a great thing, and we hope to have that continue, and we're working on developing meetings and interactions where we can understand early what your agendas are, what's coming forward, what the issues are, so that we can even help, you know, shape the ordinances and the policies that you come up with as a business voice that you can rely on. We really like to be in that role and think that's something that has developed a lot this year. We appreciate that. So, we're going to continue to encourage lots of early, open communication with us and because we've got wonderful volunteers who are willing to make that happen. In this time of huge economic stress, we have greatly appreciated the various forums that you have all held, particularly Mayor Potter and Commissioner Adams, to talk to multiple small businesses about what's happening, what's going on, and how the city can help them, and, you know, we've brainstormed with you many times about lots of ideas of things that we think could help and will make a difference to Portland. And also, we want to say when we look ahead, we're seeing that, what I've said to my group is, we'd love to take personal credit for what SBAQ has accomplished in the voice of small business over the last five years, but I do think there's a huge amount of it that is just people who are in the right moment with the right voice at the right time. I think that our economy is changing shape on a national basis. We're seeing it very early in Portland because we attract so many young creatives who start their own thing here, and, but I do think we're, you know, just on the leading edge of, as I say, a changing shape in the whole economy, and small business is going to continue to be more and more and more important in, you know, how we fare as a nation, and so that's a lot of work ahead for us. I'd also like to say, Mayor Potter, that most of this work has been done on your watch, and we greatly appreciate your providing resources for us, and, you know, you've kind of quietly opened a path for us and, you know, supported us in that way, and we are very grateful for that. It has, you know, been a lot of approval that has come from you and a lot of ideas and a lot of support, and without that, you know, we would not be here. So, that's been tremendous, and we greatly appreciate it. We also appreciate that our new staff assistant, Clay Neal, is being part of the mayor's office as opposed to part of PDC. What that has done for us is allow us to have somebody who is here in City Hall, and, you know, that gives us more knowledge just simply about what goes on because so many things happen in conversations. So, thank you very much. We hope you will approve our report, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work you do, and, Martin, I know you have another part-time job, but we certainly appreciate the time you put in on our budget and on this SBAQ.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there folks signed up to testify on this issue?
I did not have a sign-up sheet.
Is there anyone here who wishes to testify to this specific issue? Please come forward.
Was there? It's gone now. Sorry.
Good morning, Mayor Potter, Commissioners. My name is John Torino. I'm the Executive Director for the Alliance of Portland Neighborhood Business Associations, and I just wanted to take a minute or two to go on record, supporting the very valuable activities that the Small Business Advisory Council has performed over its last five years, and particularly for the past year that I've been involved with it. I also want to express our appreciation to you folks for all the support that you've provided and given to us, for your openness and willing to listen. I'd also like to emphasize our support for putting some teeth into the Small Business Bill of Rights so that, as policies are developed, there's some kind of a quantitative method for evaluating their impact on small businesses in the Portland area. I think that's one of the things that the SBAQ has been promulgating and that APNBA certainly supports with our 35 business district associations and a goodly portion of those tens of thousands of businesses. So, just wanted to basically say APNBA is fully involved with the Small Business Advisory Council. We are very happy with the work they're doing, and we're very happy with the city's support of both APNBA and SBAQ. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the report. Does that move? Second? Please call the bill.
Adams?
Well, again, thank you for everything. Look forward to our work together. Aye.
Fish?
I want to thank John and Jackie and Martin for their leadership. I want to acknowledge our old friend Ken Turner, who's here, who's been working this issue for a long time, and both as a candidate and now as a city commissioner, I have learned a lot through my interaction with you, and the SBAC and the APNBA have really moved the ball on small business issues in our community, and so we have a debt of gratitude to you. Aye.
Leonard?
Right, too. Appreciate all of the work, and I've always enjoyed the meetings that I go to, and they're always full of good, honest exchanges, and look forward to more in the future. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, thank you for your work and for this great report, and we look forward to working with you. Thanks. Aye.
Potter?
I really want to thank SBAQ and Jackie in particular. When I've been around talking to some of the small businesses in Portland, they had some absolutely wonderful ideas about how the city and the, and the small business community can work close together, and we're certainly incorporating those ideas and be presenting them to the mayor-elect and to the community. I also just want to thank all the small businesses out there. You folks do such a tremendous job. I think it's a job that's very difficult because of the economic climate, and you deserve our respect and our support, and I truly appreciate that. So, thank you very much, and I vote aye.
Please read the 10:00 AM time cert.
Item 1550, accept the Quality Rental Housing Work Group recommendations and direct bureaus to develop an implementation strategy.
Commissioner Leonard, Commissioner Fish?
Do you want to introduce?
Okay, fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Leonard. Commissioner Leonard, thank you for co-sponsoring this important resolution and for the leadership that you've given to this issue since 2007. It's my pleasure to introduce the team that has brought us the Quality Rental Housing Work Group this morning, and I want to begin just with some brief context. As a council, we've been very busy lately, focusing on a number of issues. Economic development and being at the head of the list, concerns with homeownership and the foreclosure problem in our community, expanding our affordable housing portfolio, developing new and innovative strategies to assist our homeless citizens, taking a good, hard look at our budget, looking for new and innovative ways to create financing for all these worthy projects. So, it's been a busy time, and today, another important piece of our work, dealing with renters. As everyone here would agree, everyone in our community deserves a healthy and safe place to call home. However, today, in 2008, in Portland, there are still too many families with children, seniors, people with disabilities, and low-income residents who live in unhealthy housing. Now, it's no secret that in the past, the relationship between tenants and landlords has often been marked more by tension and disagreement than agreement. And I am so proud today that in presenting this report, the two sides have come together to focus on finding the common ground necessary to move forward, to ensure that everyone in our community has a healthy place to call home. Now, we know that substandard housing impacts tenant health, increased absences from work and school, and imposes enormous health costs on our system. In this tight rental market, enhanced unit inspections are a safeguard against deferred property maintenance, helping to preserve the physical condition and value of our rental housing stock. The Quality Rental Housing Work Group has arrived through a long time of effort and meetings and work at consensus recommendations, which are going to place Portland at the forefront of protecting our tenants. The recommendations, in my view, are an impressive blend of preventative, system-wide support, and enforcement strategies designed to address these issues in a collaborative way. Without further delay, I'm pleased to invite three members of the work group to come forward to make a presentation. They are Deborah Imsey, who is the Executive Director of Metro Multi-Family Housing, Ian Slingerland, who is the former Director of the Community Alliance of Tenants, and Dr. Gary Oxman, who is the Public Health Officer for Multnomah County. Thank you all for being here, and we look forward to your presentation.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I think we all look forward to your ongoing leadership as we move into implementation of these recommendations. I wanted to start just by taking a moment to appreciate the work of Deborah and Mark Philip from the Health Department, who served on the Steering Committee with me, along with all the other members of the work group, and to appreciate the leadership of the staff at BHCD, Andrea Mathiasen and Tracy Lido, and at BDS, Ed Marahart, along with the consultants that helped guide us through this process at Decisions Decisions. The Quality Rental Housing Work Group was authorized by council to explore issues of substandard housing, housing habitability, and environmental health hazards in Portland's rental housing. The data on substandard housing and how prevalent the issue is in our community is at best incomplete, and that's one of the issues that the work group had to struggle with. Still, some data that's available suggests that there is a significant need to address the problem in our community. The 2002 American Housing Survey of the U.S. Census found that nearly 7,000 households in Portland live in units with multiple or repeated problems with heating, plumbing, electrical systems, or kitchen equipment. Multnomah County's Office of Legal Aid estimates that it receives an average of 600 calls a year, approximately 65% of the total calls they receive, from low-income tenants with habitability concerns or seeking repairs to their homes. And volunteers from the Community Alliance of Tenants Runners Rights Hotline Council an average of 550 callers a year from tenants in Portland with habitability concerns or seeking repairs to their unit. In recent years, BHCD became increasingly engaged in landlord-tenant issues regarding safety and habitability in affordable rental housing. In addition to increasing precious coverage on the issue of mold, lead, and substandard housing, there was a number of processes in the community that also raised this issue. There was the work of the Community Alliance of Tenants in developing a report on the experience of renters with repair problems in the city, work at the Health Department doing a community assessment around environmental health issues that raised healthy housing and substandard housing as a key concern of people in the community, along with the analysis of impediments to fair housing that raised the fear of retaliation in substandard housing as an issue that people were concerned about. So, the council convened the work group, and it included 20-member work group representing public health, tenant, and landlord interests. All of the individuals and organizations involved committed a tremendous amount of time and energy. The year-long work group processes included four supporting subcommittees and included a review of national best practices, and involved subject matter expert participation. It was convened by BHCD with support from the Bureau of Development Services, and it also involved the Auditor's Office, the Revenue Bureau, and the Hearings Office. And I should say, when council first initiated the work group, I was a little bit skeptical that at the time that we finished the work group, that we'd be at a different place than when we started. And I have to say that the process proved my skepticism was misplaced. The work group members all engaged in an honest effort to both understand and address a very complex set of issues. a very complex set of issues. And so I think we're at a place where we can move forward with some significant impact on the problem in our community.
Good morning, Mayor Potter, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Gary Oxman, Health Officer from Multnomah County and under Title 8, I also serve as the City Health Officer. And I'm going to talk with you about just a couple of areas here, some underlying principles of the process and recommendations. I did provide you with some written testimony from the Health Department and I'm not going to read that to you, but I will emphasize one point and that is, really would urge you to see the work of the working group as a comprehensive product with a number of interrelated areas, so really to see it as a whole product rather than coming to the temptation to split things apart and look at the specific issues. I think in reading the report, I think the work group did a great job in bringing a lot of difficult areas together into a single product. One of the key principles that the work group adopted, and all these principles were adopted by consensus, is that owners of rental housing are engaged in a business activity. It's not a sideline, it's not a hobby, it's indeed a business activity and it's a business activity that does have impacts on the health of individuals and the public in general. Secondly, the group found that landlords and tenants really need education about their respective rights and responsibilities, how to maintain healthy housing and the housing maintenance requirements of Title 29 were particular areas of interest. Thirdly, Education Mediation Services will foster joint landlord and tenant partnerships to seek solutions to these complex health and housing issues. I think as a community, we often end up with the parties in somewhat more contentious positions than they need to be and so the combination of education and structured mediation can probably solve a lot of those problems. And final principle is that the funding required to enforce healthy housing, healthy rental housing, should be provided primarily by those landlords who are repeatedly and chronically out of compliance with Title 29. But the group also recognized that there's a need for some startup funding from rental housing industry to be shared also by the renting public, by the public and renters. The group had several recommendations and again, these represent consensus of the group. First recommendation was to create an enhanced system of unit inspections that's based on and builds upon the current complaint-driven model. Secondly, to update Title 29 to better address health and safety issues and to do so in a fairly explicit fashion, to really address lead poisoning as a hazard, mold and its health hazards, pests, both rodents and insects, and as well as general sanitation. Third, the group felt there was a need to restructure the fines for noncompliance in order to create the proper incentives for landlords to address issues when they do come up. They also suggested that the mechanisms for strengthening collections really need to be undertaken so that there's a higher rate of collections and I'm sure others will speak to you as we go on. Fourth, to provide more education to tenants and property owners and the recommendations do address that in some detail. And finally, to fund these improvements, to collect an annual per-unit fee, probably in the range of $8 to $10 per rental unit with the provision that rental units under nonprofit ownership would be exempted from those fees.
Good morning. I have to echo Ian's comments. As I start out, first I want to thank the staff for all of their support. They were there for us every step of the way, getting us whatever we needed and that goes for the facilitators at Decisions Decisions. I think that what we accomplished here through this group is groundbreaking and I am quite excited to be part of this process and was delighted to get to know everybody in the work group in a much, very respectful way. The system that we came up with is complaint-driven and not mandatory, but it does enhance the current complaint-driven system. It facilitates opportunities for unit inspection that doesn't create vulnerable tenants, which is really critical. It focuses on the bad actors, the guys out there that are not complying with Title 29 and that's really what we want to do is get rid of the bad actors. It's more proactive in identification of units with repair and maintenance needs and it creates a shorter timeline for taking repairs to code hearings. Preventing retaliation was important to the work group and so this system expands the gateway for unit inspections that relied less on tenant complaints, which can make them vulnerable to retaliation. It creates-
Could you explain that bullet? I really don't understand it.
You bet. A lot of times tenants do not want to complain because they are afraid they're going to-
I understand that, but what does expanded gateway facilitate unit inspection that rely less on tenant complaints?
Yeah, we're going to look at delinquent taxes, we're going to look at if somebody, if there's an outward, outside inspection and that looks like, you know, there's something wrong there, that will allow for us to do additional inspections. If they go into the unit and there's a certain, it's an outline of a certain amount of code violations, then that will allow them to go into additional units without having them complain and in fact, can go into additional buildings.
Okay.
There's a lack of information out there about retaliation and so this process will allow collection of eviction notices when a code violation case has been opened and for three months following. Legal assistance to low-income tenants that look at the validity of retaliation complaints. There's an implementation process for this that involves multiple bureaus. BDS will be on the enforcement side, BHCD, Education and Mediation Services, the Revenue Bureau for collection of fees and fines, and the Auditor's Office for hearings and liens and foreclosures. The recommendations depend on three stable funding sources. The funding sources are interdependent and actual amounts depend on a more aggressive collection of fines and fees. We need to increase the fines for those that are not complying with Title 29 and we need to have better collection strategies for that. A temporary annual per-unit fee of $8 to $10 and a city commitment of dedicated resources, one-time only of $100,000 and ongoing of $300,000.
So again, the work group undertakes to look at an incredibly complex set of issues and in the end, these recommendations are probably imperfect, but we believe that with your commitment to implementation and an appropriate focus on an ongoing evaluation, that these recommendations will result in significant system improvements for landlords, tenants and the city as a whole. The recommendations will do more to hold those who willfully disregard their responsibilities accountable and it will also provide more tools and support for landlords and tenants who are working collaboratively to address areas of shared responsibility. In particular, we believe that for tenants, the system improvements in the recommendations will result in more timely repairs, better identification of units owned by landlords who are chronically noncompliant, greater education of landlords on healthy home maintenance, additional venues for dispute resolution that doesn't rely on tenants using the courts and risking eviction, and support with complaints of retaliation. For landlords, we believe that it will help in earlier identification of units with repair needs, greater education of tenants on healthy home maintenance, the inclusion of tenant behavior responsibilities in the city code, additional venues for dispute resolution besides eviction court, and inspections that are supported primarily by fines and fees from noncompliant owners. And as an example, we wanted to just share a case study of an actual, an actual building that went through the code enforcement process prior to these recommendations. So after years of problems in August 2005, inspections in four units at Hosway's apartment found dozens of code violations, including inadequate heating facilities. The gas heater there that's in the picture was the only heating for a two-bedroom apartment. There were no smoking alarms in sleeping areas, deteriorated and spongy subflooring indicating structural failure and excessive mold growth on walls and ceilings throughout the unit. So these ongoing repair problems in Hosway's home caused problems for all the members of Hosway's family. Hosway's asthma was triggered regularly, making work difficult and the damp and cold conditions often left his son ill, leading to missed school. As they went through the enforcement process, it took seven months and an entire winter before the code violations were remedied. This is because at the time, the fines and enforcement system was inadequate to achieve timely compliance. The monthly enforcement fee that the landlord received was only under $300, approximately half of the rent from just one of the units. That enforcement fee doubled after six months, what was still inadequate to result in compliance. Compliance ultimately required a code hearing and the threat of imposing significant fines. Once the Quality Rental Housing Work Group recommendations are adopted and implemented, the situation will be much different. There'll be earlier identification of units with repair needs. There'll be stronger initial fines to promote compliance. In the case of Hosway's building, the initial fees would have bumped up to $1,150 as opposed to under $300. And that's because the initial fees are increased and the fees are based on the number of units out of compliance as opposed to the size of the property. There'd be a quicker doubling of fines, so after only four months, the fees would double and double again after eight. And finally, and perhaps most importantly in this case, is that there would be increased capacity for immediate referral to code hearings when serious fire life safety violations exist. So rather than waiting seven months, that case would have immediately gone to code Thank you again.
Mayor, we have another panel that's going to briefly come forward if, but if people had questions here or we can come back to questions later.
Questions for these folks?
Thank you.
Well, I guess I just said, maybe a quick question. So are we, what are we doing in Title 29 or what are your recommendations with respect to issues about mold in particular?
So it adds more clarity around what's required with dampness and I think most importantly creates an inspection protocol that gives the inspectors the tools to identify the underlying moisture source that's the result, the cause of the mold, rather than focusing entirely on the presence or absence of mold and so that it would get to actually addressing the causes of the mold as opposed to just its presence.
So a new protocol for inspectors?
Correct. And new tools and training to implement that.
I believe it also creates some code opportunities to require ventilation for mold mitigation that were not previously in the cold. So there are units that were approved under previous building codes or under previous city codes that would now be swept up for more intervention.
Okay, thanks.
I think the panel and invite up three individuals who are going to make brief statements. Gregoria Munoz, who is a tenant, Larry Bricker from American Property Management, and Sylvia Alred, who is also a tenant.
Thanks for being here, folks. When you speak, please state your name for the record.
My name is Gregoria Munoz.
And Amari, I'm here to interpret.
My name is Gregoria Munoz and I'm an Inquilino in Portland. I'm here to support the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group because we all deserve a safe place to call home. I've lived in my current home for over a year. I live with my husband and three children in a two-bedroom apartment in northeast Portland. My unit is unsafe because of severe mold in bedrooms, bathroom and kitchen. My smaller son has severe asthma and I get very strong headaches because of the mold. It has ruined my children's clothes, my clothes, our bed covers and our mattresses. My kid's school had to help us replace our children's clothes. It's incredibly stressful to know your home is making you sick and your kids sick and to feel like there isn't anything you can do about it. I asked the owner to take care of the mold right after we moved in and the request was completely ignored. Over time, other problems started to arise. A leak led to water damage and rotten flooring in one of the bathrooms. The garbage disposal broke. There was a leak underneath the kitchen sink for a long time that you could only turn on and off with a wrench. I had to catch water in the sink with a bucket and then dump it outside. Then recently, I had no hot water in my entire unit for about a week. My husband and I informed the manager several times and their answer was they would see what they could do. My family had to shower in a neighbor's apartment for a week, the same days that I had to go every morning to the laundry room to put some hot water in a bucket, carry it over to my apartment so my kids could wash their teeth, hands and face before going to school. I was afraid to call the inspector about the mold and other problems we had. I was worried that we'd get kicked out with no place to go, but when we didn't have water, I decided I had to call. When the city inspector came, he found multiple fire life safety violations. A copy of the inspection letter is attached to my testimony. My unit is number 10. After the landlord got the inspector's notice, he came and said that he would fix mold but that we would have to pay for it. If the recommendations of the Group of Control for Viviendas of Rentas Seguras passed, families like mine won't have to go through all of this because the recommendations will make the landlord take their business more seriously. The recommendation will provide support for tenants afraid of retaliation and they'll make it easier for city inspectors to hold landlords accountable for mold problems that aren't tenants' faults. Please approve and fund the Quality Rental Housing Work Group Resolution.
And that is one reason why myself as a landlord and I think others can support it or do support it, is that it does focus aggressively on those problems. Property owners and property managers are appalled by the headline story, circumstances like that were just described, along with everyone else. It reflects badly on our industry and our profession. I do feel that those are the exception rather than the rule. And don't tell the true story of the dedication of the professionals that I work with and serve with in Metro Multifamily Housing. Members of our association, other fine landlords, don't just provide housing. We provide homes to thousands of people, and we recognize that. And particularly, our on-site apartment managers go the extra mile in delivering service, the kinds of things that don't wind up on the news. And I, you know, I think our more accurate representation of our industry and housing providers. I did just want to take a brief moment to highlight and acknowledge one of those apartment managers I brought with me today, Patricia Rosaball from our company, right back here. And she had a circumstance last week that I thought was relevant, and I would share it again to bring out this point of not, of the dedication of these professionals. But she had a resident, she manages apartments for us in East Portland. She had a resident that had lost her power, a single senior, living on her own. She'd lost her power for failure to be able to pay the bill. And when it came to Patricia's attention, she had, she contacted service agencies on her behalf, gave her phone numbers to call, the resident to call as well. When the resident was able to get an appointment with one of those agencies, she actually drove her to the appointment and drove her home. The result was that agency was able to pay the bill, pay the back bill, get power restored that same day. And so again, a small kind of incident that I think is duplicated, you know, many, many times, but probably avoided that resident losing her home. So again, I'm sorry. Frog there. Again, the story doesn't make the news, but again, I think it's representative of what goes on there. And so again, getting back to the work group recommendations, the focus on the bad actor, I think, you know, those were strong. After more than a year of frank discussions and thoughtful compromise, these recommendations before you do provide a comprehensive package that targets those bad actors. And just to highlight a couple of things that were kind of mentioned, so I won't go into detail, but the enhanced complaint-driven system, I think will accomplish that. The type of additional triggers for inspections that were just described, I think will be effective. Also with increased fines and a strengthened collection effort, I think that again, the bad actor can be held accountable and made to pay for the additional inspections required. I would highly recommend that the council implement the recommendation to create the multi-bureau task force designed to improve those collections. And that's in the recommendations. And also through enhanced training and education for both landlords and tenants. Education is a key part of quality housing and an important element of these recommendations. So to conclude, without adequate funding, any set of recommendations will only be a set of plans on a shelf. So implementing these recommendations will require funds that are beyond the current provided by the city. And the work group has proposed a balanced, stable funding package with cost constraints. And some of those have already been described, so I won't repeat those. So we think that the Quality Rental Housing Work Group recommendations offer Portland a smarter, more effective, and less costly way to focus on the incidence of substandard housing while balancing the needs of landlords and tenants. And so we look forward to working on the implementation as these go forward. Thank you.
So Larry, American Property Management is the company owned by Joe Weston?
That's correct.
So I've had a lot of experience with American Property Management in a number of roles, the first of which was a long time ago as a fire inspector. And while I am impressed that you're here and saying the things you are, I'm not surprised because Joe, and people might find this confounding if they've ever tried to do a business deal with Joe, he is one of the most, he is one of the most progressive property managers I ever dealt with in a professional capacity and consistently did the right thing in anticipation of, well, I shouldn't even say in anticipation of, but without having to be told to that, to that by a housing inspector or a fire inspector. And while that's great, I think, and I'm interested in your response to this, it's my view, having had some experience since being on the council, dealing with really substandard housing and problems with housing, that it's actually good business. What I've learned from the landlords that you would characterize as a bad landlord, who we've had to put through quite some arduous processes to get them to comply, that in the end, the other end of that, they said they actually had better-run apartments. They made more money, not necessarily by raising rents, but by reducing vandalism and just having a tolerance that didn't allow for some of the things that happened to lead in the degradation of their properties. So I guess the message that I got from that, and I'm hoping that you would echo, is what we're attempting to do here just isn't an enforcement action. It's actually teaching bad landlords to be good business managers. And they will actually succeed better if they do the kinds of things you guys have done for decades at American Property Management.
Well, thank you, and I would echo those sentiments. Deferred maintenance, I think, is, you know, a devastation to an investment. These are investment properties. And you can temporarily maybe defer that maintenance and gain income, but eventually it's going to catch up. So I would completely agree it's in the property owner's best interest to maintain the properties. You know, water infiltration is a prime cause of damage. It should be found and stopped and reversed. So I completely agree.
Well, and I just want to especially make sure to acknowledge the good work you guys have done ever since I've been aware of the business that you're in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Leonard, I appreciate those comments because at the heart of, I think, this report that we're receiving today is a recognition that both tenants and landlords have responsibilities to make this system work. And I think that is the reason we were able to get the progress that we're seeing today with the consensus that's reflected in this report. Thank you, folks, for coming forward. We have one other panel we're going to ask them to be brief. That's Ed Marahart, BDS Manager, Neighborhood Inspections, Ross Karan, Site Services Division Manager, and Mike Alderman, Portland Fire and Rescue Prevention and Code Enforcement. We're, gentlemen, we're a little bit behind schedule this morning, so if you could each take about a minute and...
Well, these guys are the law. They're short and brief.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I've listened to...
State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mike Alderman. I'm a special hazard inspector for the Fire Marshal's Office. I do want to thank you for allowing me to serve in that position. I know that you all contributed that for me. The program that you've been briefed on this morning is a program, I think, from an inspector's standpoint, benefits immensely. I'm part of a multi-bureau task force that deals with buildings that are very substandard. And in that process, I found that it's very, it is very effective to have all of our bureaus working together. BDS, Fire, we use Housing, we use all the agencies that we can, and it develops quite a bit of pressure on the landlord to focus and bring his buildings up to standard. When you look at the program that you're seeing today, as a fire inspector, we go to a lot of different buildings. Some of them are commercial, some of them are residential, some of them are a combination of both. Some of these buildings, they don't rise to the level that the task force deals with, but they still are very problematic. We end up with a situation that the fire code doesn't allow us really to apply a lot of pressure because they're single-family dwellings or maybe duplexes on top of commercial spaces. And by having this task force or the Fire Marshal's Office be able to deal directly with the agencies here, they can actually put their teams together and go to work. We can work together and help implement the changes that need to be done in the building. What I've learned with the task force is that education of these landlords are very important. We can work together and help show them how to make their buildings more successful and help with the agencies to abate the issues that we are facing. By being able to work directly with BDS and directly work with Housing, it's a very powerful tool. When you're standing as a fire inspector at 3:30 in the afternoon and it's raining and you're forced with possibly evicting a tenant from a dangerous place and have no place for them to go, it's a very difficult situation. By allowing this program to go forward, we will have funding and we will be able to have the people that we can directly contact to actually take care of those folks. And with the educational portion of it, we can work with both the tenant and we can work also with the landlords to be able to educate them to the benefits, the city benefits, because we're going to reduce the amount of possible fire deaths and the amount of calls that fire and police go on. And we found that it's very, a very, very successful program. I'm sorry for my throat. It's a little difficult today.
I think half the panel up here and almost everyone we had here has the same bug, so...
In just a few seconds, I would like to introduce Ms. Allright to be able to come up to you and explain to you the difficulties that they face. I've been working with these folks for about 90 days to try and come up with a solution to the problems that they're facing. And it's exactly the problems that your new program is looking at. It would, from my standpoint, it looks like an absolute win-win, and I'm really glad to be part of it.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, my name's Melissa Allred, and I live in an apartment with my mother, Sylvia. The apartment we live in has a number of kind of severe safety issues, including there's no heat, there's no electricity, and about half of it, there are holes in the walls that are so large that we actually have blackberry vines growing inside our apartment. When we asked our landlord to come up and look at the apartment and look at the mold that was growing because of the leakages, he said, "Okay, well, how about I fix your problem by giving you 30 days to get out of the building?" Because, you know, when we complained about that, because our lease, our rental agreement is tied in with the storefront below us, of which I'm a member, it's a co-op, we can't complain about these sort of things. We can, if we complain to him, he of course says, "Get out." And he would also be kicking the store out, the entire co-op. So when Inspector Alderman came in to the storefront because of a number of complaints and, I believe, condemnations of the, of buildings that the landlord owned, he was inspecting the storefront and he asked if he could come up. I was really hesitant because I was afraid we'd get kicked out. So not only do I feel powerless to have these problems addressed or fixed at all, we also, you know, financially aren't able to look for a new place. So I'm really excited about this whole thing going on. Thank you for hearing our case.
Hello. Ed Marahart, I am the program manager for Neighborhood Inspections, part of Bureau Development Services, and we enforce the city's Title 29, the city's property maintenance code. And we are the frontline inspectors out in the neighborhood and community. And just a couple of things, I'll be real brief. I just wanted to mention that some of the recommendations, we are willing and able to absorb internally and begin immediately implementing, and that includes convening of the Neighborhood Inspection Stakeholder Advisory Committee, which will be made up of tenant groups, landlord groups, Healthy Home Groups, Housing Authority of Portland, BHCD, et cetera. We're willing to be able to internally start drafting some of the code changes to include language to deal with health around lead, mold, pests. We're beginning the discussions already with the Auditor's Office and the Revenue Bureau around improving collection strategies, which is a key component in terms of collecting additional revenues for the program. And also incorporating education outreach activities into our existing BDS landlord training program. And then Ross Karan has some additional comments. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Ross Karan with the Bureau Development Services. I'm the division manager for the division in which Ed's group is in. I wanted to, in front of you all, thank the work, or the work that the Quality Rental Housing Work Group has done. I think it's, it was, it was great to see both the landlords and the rental advocates or renters advocates working together to come up with a very comprehensive and, I think, effective list of recommendations. And also to acknowledge that they were very early on involving BDS. Not Ed and another member from his group were involved in the stakeholder meetings, but also coming to BDS management to gain our buy-in. They, we identified some areas where we could make improvements and do some compromising, and they worked with us very well to go forward with a comprehensive proposal. And in closing, just that BDS looks forward to continuing the work with Quality Rental Housing Work Group. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your good work. And Mayor, that's the presentation.
Do we have anybody sign to testify on this matter?
We have 20 people signed up.
Okay. We have, we're running behind schedule. I'd ask that folks keep their comments to two minutes, please. Please call the first three.
First three are Mary Mann, Joe Deluna, and Sue Doolin.
When you speak, please state your name for the record. You each have two minutes. Anyone can begin.
Thank you. My name is Mary Mann, and I'm a renter in Portland. I am here to support the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group. I believe that we all deserve a safe place to call home in Portland. The renters ought to have safe and healthy housing and that landlords are held accountable for providing safe rental houses. In August of 2006, I moved into a shared housing home in East Portland, northeast 108, 48th and Burnside. Our rental contract stated that the household tenants would split the cost of utilities, a standard practice for most rental houses. I was responsible for managing the utility bills. I noticed that the utility bills were higher than normal. It started with the water bill in October, followed by the electric bill in November, and then heating system in January. We discovered that the water meter was broken, so it was impossible to get a clear reading. Then I found that the previous homeowner owned and operated a nursery business there. After purchasing the home, the landlord didn't refit the piping and water meter for standard single-family dwelling. We paid a minimum of three times more than the amount for a single-family home. The water bill seemed to be the tip of the iceberg. Then we began dealing with high electric bills and dangerous power surges throughout the home. We found out that the house was not wired properly. We discovered that the electrical wiring was done wrong and without permits, creating a huge safety hazard. We sought out for the landlord and PG&E because we were so concerned. Our landlord ignored our requests, our repair requests. After several requests, PG&E finally fixing the wiring, even though it was not their fault that the wiring was installed incorrectly. PG&E had told me that this was a fire hazard. The general ground wire was loose at its base. Our home could have burned down because of this faulty wiring. Again, high bills for the heat alerted me to another repair problem. After again not getting a response from the landlord, I researched and found the man who installed our boiler system. He generously came in...
They, we identified some areas where, where we could make improvements and do some compromising, and they, they worked with us very well to go forward with a comprehensive proposal. And in closing, just that BDS looks forward to continuing the work with Quater Rental Housing Work Group. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your good work. And Mayor, that's the presentation.
Do we have anybody sign to testify on this matter?
We have 20 people signed up.
We have, we're running behind schedule. I'd ask that folks keep their comments to two minutes, please. Please call the first three.
First three are Mary Mann, Joe Deluna, and Sue Doolin. They'll be followed by Manuel Loyah, Kenneth Vickery, I'm sorry, and Sher, and John Doten, I believe is the last name.
When you speak, please state your name for the record. You each have two minutes. Anyone can begin.
Thank you. My name is Mary Mann, and I'm a renter in Portland. I am here to support the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group. I believe that we all deserve a safe place to call home in Portland. The renters ought to have safe and healthy housing and that landlords are held accountable for providing safe rental houses. In August of 2006, I moved into a shared housing home in East Portland, Northeast 108, 48th and Burnside. Our rental contract stated that the household tenants would split the cost of utilities, a standard practice for most rental houses. I was responsible for managing the utility bills. I noticed that the utility bills were higher than normal. It started with the water bill in October, followed by the electric bill in November, and then heating system in January. We discovered that the water meter was broken, so it was impossible to get a clear reading. Then I found that the previous homeowner owned and operated a nursery business there. After purchasing the home, the landlord didn't refit the piping and water meter for standard single-family dwelling. We paid a minimum of three times more than the amount for a single-family home. The water bill seemed to be the tip of the iceberg. Then we began dealing with high electric bills and dangerous power surges throughout the home. We found out that the house was not wired properly. We discovered that the electrical wiring was done wrong and without permits, creating a huge safety hazard. We sought out for the landlord and PG&E because we were so concerned. Our landlord ignored our request, our repair requests. After several requests, PG&E finally fixing the wiring, even though it was not their fault that the wiring was installed incorrectly. PG&E had told me that this was a fire hazard. The general ground wire was loose at its base. Our home could have burned down because of this faulty wiring. Again, high bills for the heat alerted me to another repair problem. After again not getting response from the landlord, I researched and found the man who installed our boiler system. He generously came in to our place in January and found that the required maintenance was not done on the radiator, so they were filthy and did not allow the system to function as it was intended to. The landlord then employed residents of the home to do repairs and upgrades to bring the home up to code, including converting the basement into a rentable space. These repairs were never cleaned up properly, and they ended up clogging the radiators. We paid in excess of 700 per month on heat and electricity. These enormous costs were due to the landlord's negligence in keeping our home properly maintained. Not only did this situation lead to expensive utilities, it led to many fights with housemates who would not pay for what, you know, the high costs.
Ma'am, your time is up. Could you please close? You can have a closing sentence.
I hope that my story has shown why we all deserve a safe place to call home. The recommendation will support, provide support for tenants working with their landlords trying to maintain their units, and they will make it easier for city inspectors to hold landlords accountable for repairs that aren't tenants' faults. Finally, I hope that you commissioners and mayor will vote to support the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group and fully fund the recommendations. Thank you.
My name is Joe Deluna. Me and my family moved to, via, I'm sorry. I'm here to support the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group. I believe that we all deserve a safe place to call home and that landlords should be held accountable for their responsibilities. My family and I moved back in 2003 to the Via Claravista and Kilisworth and Colley Boulevard, Northeast Portland. We lived at the same apartment by close to a year, and then with no reason, we were told that we had to move to some other place, some other apartment. And by the time being moving, I noticed that the stuff was effective, all rusted and all kinds of problems. And I notified the landlord right away, and he said that was like a new one. So I said, "No, I don't think that's a new one." They brought me a different one. It was about the same shape. And I notified him right away, and he was all filthy inside too. And they brought me the third one. They said that was the best they can do it, and I called the workers over there to come and take a look at it. They, they said, "Well, but you can clean it." So I said, "Okay, I'll try to clean it." So I, I did, and I got to deal with that for almost nine months. Finally, that went off again. They gave me another one with this almost the same condition after I told them that I would have paid for, would have bought my own stuff and taken, taken off the rental, the rent. And finally, they brought me a half decent one. And I called about cockroaches. I noticed there was cockroaches, bed bugs, and they hardly do anything. They just came and sprayed, I don't know what chemicals anyway. And one day, by taking it up, they're coming out of the shower, I, I noticed there was water coming down from the ceiling, and I went and notified them. They came, they just put a, a patch, a patch on top. You could have seen the big patch on it. And they never, they, actually, they never did anything about it, and we had all kinds of problems. This time, one of the workers came and sprayed, we're not having experience.
Sir, you're gonna have to wind it up.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you for taking the time to hear my story today. I believe that we all deserve the safe place to call home and that landlords should be accountable for their responsibilities, and recommendations will make appear for the city inspectors to help landlords accountable for maintaining their units in safe and healthy conditions. I urge you to support the recommendations from the Quality Rental Housing Work Group and fully fund the recommendations.
My name is Sue Doolin, and I have lived at my present address since January 26, 2008. My one complaint is that the insulation is inadequate, virtually nonexistent. This is a sample of the insulation in the attic floor, about one and a half inches deep. Because I pay the electric bill and am a greenie, I resist wasting energy, so in the cold weather, I turn on the heat seldom and minimally and wear six to eight layers of clothing. To my surprise, I lost 14 pounds early this year, and reassured that there was no medical cause, I think it's probable that I was burning extra calories to stay warm. On March 1st, I submitted a written maintenance repair request for insulation of the walls and ceiling. I knew that the particular repair of the walls was unlikely because they are brick, but I hoped that proper insulation would be laid in the attic. I did considerable research at Portland City Hall and online in an attempt to understand exactly what my rights were in this regard. On or about August 29th, I got my definitive answer by telephone from an official in the Bureau of Development Services, who very kindly and clearly explained that the present code only applies when a landlord remodels and not for an existing condition. Recently, I brought to the attention of our very helpful and efficient manager last month's PGE insert in my electric bill, which stated, quote, "Renters also may receive weatherization assistance, but the landlord must agree to have the work done," unquote. The manager photocopied the flyer and assured me that she would show it to the owner. On October 29th, she called to tell me that the owner had said the report, repair was, quote, "Not feasible," unquote, at this time. I would like to bring to your attention a quote from the Oregonian Wednesday, April 16th, 2008, in the article, "How Does Portland Top Itself? The most difficult challenges confronting global warming lie still ahead, including the need for green retrofitting of houses, businesses, and buildings across the community because buildings produce about 40% of emissions. While the QRHW recommendations don't specifically address my problem, I believe that their passage will be a first step in bringing to light deficiencies in the city's property maintenance regulations and compelling the inclusion of weatherization improvements in them. Mayor Potter and Commissioners, I strongly urge you to fully adopt and fund the Quality Rental Housing Work Group recommendations. Thank you for your time."
Please call the next three.
Next three are Manuel Loyah, Sherri Smith, and Josephine Cooper.
Just one second.
And they'll be followed by Erin Cranford, John Doten, and Bridget Daniel.
Please state your name when you speak. You each have two minutes, and anyone can begin.
Yes, thank you. My name is Manuel, Jesus Manuel Loyacano. I am from Chihuahua, Mexico, immigrant to this city for 17 years. And my roommate, Kenneth Vickery, we are renters in, here in Portland. And for the past two years, we have rented an apartment on East Burnside and Southeast 50, Southeast 55th Avenue in the Mount Tabor neighborhood. My roommate and I started paying 725 for a two-bedroom unit, which was remodeled previous to our move in, except for two high-wall windows in the living room. We were told by the manager that those windows were going to be replaced with new ones sometime soon. One of the windows was simply covered with a piece of plywood and the other has, has had the glass broken. In various occasions, we addressed this problem with the manager and repeatedly were told the same answer, that windows will come soon. During the winter of 2006, 2007, we noticed a considerable increase in the electric bill because the heating is powered by electricity. At the end of the winter, which you know usually runs all the way until the rains are out here in Portland, we addressed the problem again, this time in writing, and we were told we will be getting the windows soon. As a way to help defray the expense of the heating bill, we were given a $100 check, which helped us quite a bit. Finally, almost a year after we moved in, in the middle of summer, one of said windows was replaced, and again, we were hearing the old phrase, "The other window will come soon." Of course, again, we waited. In October last year, our rent was raised, was raised again to 750. We signed a new contract, and the story repeats, "The window will come soon." Last month, we signed a new contract, so for two years now, we are there, and it is now 775, and we are told the same story, "The window will repairs, will be repaired soon." We called the manager, and so far, just him overtook the measurements of the window, and until now, three weeks later, we don't have a window. Please, Mayor and Mayor-elect, I and Commissioners, I really, really ask you to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sherri Smith, and I've been living in Portland for about 25 years and a renter the entire time. Currently, I was evicted from my apartment that I lived at for six years because I made some complaints to the city, and these are follow-up complaints that the neighbor had made regarding exterior problems with the property in Northeast Portland on Fargo. Also, I am a victim of regentrification. We were pushed out of the neighborhood and priced out of the neighborhood. After the landlord got information and noticed that we were complaining, and we brought out Channel 6 News to do a story on the complaints, he issued all four tenants in the fourplex a 30-day no cause eviction notice. And this was very, very stressful. I asked him for more time because it's hard to pack it all up in 30 days when you've been living somewhere for six years and maintaining curb appeal and property management at the same time. The thing is, they openly, the owner openly had the property for sale and showed one buyer from California the property, and they were all openly talking about converting the fourplex into condos. And the Oregon state law says that if you're gonna misplace affordable housing tenants, you need 120 days. Well, they didn't honor any of that. None of the fines were ever paid, not even the fines that were issued two years ago from neighbors were ever paid to the current landlord, who is Charles Gill, and none of that ever got taken care of or addressed, and we get a 30-day notice, and that's, that's it. We're out on the street. And so when complaints come in, we need to be protected, and it'd be very, very helpful for everybody in the entire state to be able to have affordable, safe housing. Please vote in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Josephine Cooper. Thank you for hearing my comments today. In 2006, I broke a lease with my landlady because of delayed and unreliable repairs related to mold and mildew and a threat of bodily harm from a fellow tenant. Even though this action was supported by Oregon advocacy, in a letter to her, the landlady responded by giving me a negative reference, which caused me to be denied for affordable senior housing. I hoped to find an attorney to take my case pro bono, but was unable to find anybody. During a recent attempt to get senior housing, the same landlady responded by, to the caller by saying, "I will not discuss this tenant, except to say that I will not rent to her again, and you would do well to think twice about it, too." I omitted this landlady from my next application and rented a place for one year, paid my rent on time. Several apartments were in, in the complex were at the point of serious plumbing failure, and mine unfortunately was one of them. I heated water on the stove for six weeks. My heating bill went up to $300 for two months. When I complained about an additional plumbing failure underneath the sink, the landlord gave me 30 days' notice without cause to leave. I moved into a new place, my third move in 16 months, and was charged an extra security deposit of $600 due to my unstable housing record. The two experiences described above taught me several things, which all point to the need for the city council to adopt the recommendations of the Community Alliance of Tenants. This is a complaint-driven process, and it shouldn't have to be driven by low-income, vulnerable tenants. Managing housing is a business that should require a high level of certified competency. It's clear by the testimony of other property managers here that ethical property managers have nothing to fear from these new regulations. A negative reference by a landlord should have some relationship to laws against slander if it is, has an impact on the tenant's reputation. I hope the council will give serious consideration to this timely matter as we hear about the millions of Americans that are losing their homes to foreclosure. Proper oversight of rental practices will become more important in keeping families sheltered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three are Erin Cranford, John Doten, and Bridget Daniel. They'll be followed by, I believe it's Hosea Felix, Christina Pelosios, and Anita Sanchez.
Thanks for being here, folks. When you speak, state your name for the record. You each have two minutes.
Dear Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Erin Cranford, and I am providing testimony in support of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group recommendations. In 2005, the Community Alliance of Tenants conducted a project exploring the experience of tenants in Portland with substandard housing conditions. The project centered on interviews with over 60 tenants in Portland that self-identified as experiencing substandard housing conditions. One finding of this research project was that half of the tenants we interviewed believed that the conditions of their housing contributed to poor health in their families. In 2007, CAT, in partnership with the Multnomah County Health Department, initiated a follow-up needs assessment to further understand this connection between substandard housing and tenant health. This project was called Tenant's Voice: A Housing and Health Needs Self-Assessment and Intervention Planning. The needs assessment consisted of two main components. One, a healthy dwelling, a health dwelling assessment to identify housing repair and other problems linked to chronic respiratory illnesses, including asthma, and two, an effectiveness of remedy assessment to understand the effectiveness of tenant landlord, CAT, city inspector, and other actions taken to remedy the problems or reduce exposures. Using interview guides and assessment tools developed by Multnomah County Health Department and CAT, the community workers conducted visual and self-report inspections and interviews with tenants who were selected because they reported health problems related to their rental housing. We sought to understand from the tenant's perspective responses to repair requests, effectiveness of CAT assistance, involvement of code inspection, and other agencies, and barriers to requesting or taking action to remedy health hazards. The repairs attempted by tenants, steps taken to lessen the impact of our exposure to unhealthy housing conditions and dwelling uses that contribute to exposures also were assessed. The information obtained from the interviews was analyzed using quantitative and qualitative methods by our health department partner. An executive summary of the project prepared for the Northwest Health Foundation, a project founder is included with my testimony. John Doherty from Multnomah County Health Department's Program Design and Evaluation Services will provide an overview of the findings and following that Bridget Daniel from the Community Alliance of Tenants will discuss how the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group are reinforced by the findings of this project. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. I'm John Doherty, and I'm from the Program Design and Evaluation Services section of the Multnomah County Health Department, and I want to summarize what we learned from the systematic interviews of 53 low-income families as a part of the Tenant's Voice project that Erin just described. Regarding the environmental conditions in the rental units, 83% of the families reported mold and moisture problems in their dwellings. In addition, about 65% of the families reported structural defects such as holes and gaps between walls and floors, and about half were exposed to insect or rodent antigens or faced potential paint hazards. The families also reported health problems they believed were related to the conditions of their rental dwellings. Over 90% reported respiratory health problems, and a third reported that children living in the units also had respiratory symptoms. Most families reported that their symptoms were worse in the home and got better away. However, in about 30% of homes, the use of fragrances and chemical cleaning products, smoking indoors, or the presence of furry pets may have contributed to some of those respiratory problems. The families also reported significant problems with seeking repairs from landlords. Landlords in our interviews agreed to make repairs about 70% of the time. However, but even when those repairs were promised, no repairs were made in 40% of those rental units. About 35% of those families attempted to make their own repairs to the structure at their own expense, and similarly, 80% made changes such as letting more outside air in or turning up the heat in an attempt to reduce exposures to mold and moisture, again, at the cost of higher utility bills and the use of more energy. Overall, 75% of the families who asked for assistance in getting repairs were unsatisfied or very unsatisfied with the process. And these difficulties encountered by renting families when attempting to remedy dwelling problems led many to abandon efforts to have repairs made, resulting in continued exposures and continued health problems. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bridget Daniel, and I am providing testimony on behalf of Community Alliance of Tenants in support of the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group. The findings of the Tenant's Voice project reinforce the need for more action to address the connection between substandard housing and tenant health. We believe the recommendations of the Quality Rental
believe the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group will do much to address the findings described in our needs assessment. The vast majority of tenants in the study reported that their health problems were associated with mold and moisture problems in their homes. Further, tenants reported that the current inspection practices and enforcement tools do not work well. The inspection practices for detecting mold problems and moisture intrusion used by local agencies and organizations are inadequate. This often leads to superficial cosmetic repairs that do not prevent a recurrence of the problem. The Quality Rental Housing Work Group's recommendations address this shortcoming. The recommendations will result in better definition in the code of excess moisture in rental housing. And the recommendations direct the neighborhood inspections team to implement a new mold inspections protocol to better identify moisture sources when mold is found during inspections. Many low-income renters found that the repair assistance system is very complex, financially risky, functions poorly, and requires a large amount of time and effort for renters to successfully negotiate. The current system puts a tremendous burden on vulnerable tenants to make it work, leading many to abandon efforts to have repairs made, resulting in a health inequity in which low-income renters are more likely to live with housing defects that expose them to health hazards. The Quality Rental Housing Work Group responds to these systemic problems by instituting an enhanced inspection system that creates opportunities for initiating inspections without tenant complaint. Finally, over half the tenants in the needs assessment wanted to move but could not because of cost and availability of affordable rental housing. This provides further evidence of the need for City to couple improved code enforcement with an ongoing commitment to fund affordable housing program. Thank you for your time. Please adopt and fund the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group. We all deserve a safe place to call home.
The next three are Hosea Felix, Christina Palacios, and Anita Sanchez. And they'll be followed by Nancy Titus, Namkeisha Roper, and Carter Whitlock.
Thanks for being here, folks. When you speak, please state your name for the record. You each have two minutes.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Anita Sanchez. Querido alcalde y comisionados, mi nombre es Anita Sanchez. Yo soy aniquilina en la ciudad de Portland. Yo estoy aquí para apoyar las recomendaciones del grupo de trabajo para viviendas en rentas seguras y saludables porque todos merecemos un lugar seguro que podemos llamar hogar.
My name is Anita Sanchez and I'm a tenant in the city of Portland. And I'm here to support the recommendations of the Quality Rental Housing Work Group because we all deserve a safe place to call home.
Mi familia ha vivido aquí por 16 años en el autoaludificio en que vivo. He ha vivido los problemas de reparaciones por muchos años, incluyendo el problema del mojo. A finales del invierno del año pasado, la dueña trajo a alguien para inspeccionar la unidad. Durante ese tiempo había mucho mojo en las paredes. También le mostré y le pedí a la dueña que viera el mojo que había en el armario de mi recámara y el armario. La dueña me dijo que harían un cargo en el mojo. Yo le pregunté si solamente iban a pintar sobre el mojo y la dueña me aseguró que eso no pasaría. Sin embargo, cuando regresaron a hacer las reparaciones, fue exactamente lo único que hicieron.
My family has lived here for 16 years. In the building that we live in right now, there's been repair problems for years and years, including mold problems. The end of winter, of last winter, the owner brought someone to inspect the place. And during that time, there was mold all over the walls. I also showed her about the mold and asked that she would come to take a look at the mold in the closet, in my bedroom, and in the bathroom. The landlord said that they would take care of the mold, as if they would just paint over it, and she assured me that that wouldn't happen. But that's exactly what ended up happening. I insisted that painting wouldn't solve the problem and that the mold would just grow back. The manager was very angry about that and telling me that I should just open the windows.
Yo insistí que pintar no solucionaría el problema y que el mojo volvería a salir. La encargada estaba muy enojada diciéndome que yo debería de abrir la ventana, pero si hasta el marco de la ventana se pudrió, luego me gritó, "Tú tienes mojo porque tienes mucho yonque." Yo le aclaré que no era yonque, que era mi ropa, lo único que tenía en mi closet. El mojo no es por nuestras cosas del edificio. El edificio es muy viejo y necesitaba muchas reparaciones. Tuvimos una gotera por cuatro meses en la techa de la bañera que provenía...
Folks, you're running over your time limit significantly. It's going to have to be a total of two minutes for each of the folks, so you're going to have to reduce the testimony to that a time, including translation.
Okay.
It's over.
My name is Christina Palacios and I was here to read a testimony of Ara Selita lives in northeast Portland, but she couldn't come in and she really wanted to be her voice heard. The city inspector went to some of her units where she lives and after the city inspector found a lot of, did allow citations, they still did not get the repairs. So please, I really encourage you to read her testimony because it has a lot of things. She said that maybe if the inspectors have better tools to make the landlord responsible, it will help her entire unit.
Ma'am, if you hand it to the clerk, we'll make sure that goes in the record and we all get a copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for trying to... My name is Maria Felix Santamirano. Mr. Tomlin, Commissioner, thank you for your time. I might let her know this is... Solo quiero apoyar, apoyar a lo demás, todos mis compañeros que dijeron. Casi tengo lo mismo, me pasa lo mismo. Solo quiero pedirle que él se ponga a trabajar, que hagan algo.
Thank you. I have written testimony that I'll submit. I'd just like to say that my story is much the same as my colleagues here and I just ask you to address these important issues.
Porque similar, lo que estamos viviendo nosotros es como, le podía preguntar a cada uno de nosotros o ustedes mismos. Si rentamos un hotel y no nos dan cama ni baño, ¿lo pagaríamos con gusto?
It's, you know, the same thing that could say to any one of us or to any of you. You know, if you were staying in a hotel and it didn't have a bed or a bathroom, would you want to pay for that?
Entonces, pues yo apoyo las recomendaciones de mis compañeros para que nos puedan ayudar con esos fondos para tener nuestras viviendas seguras y saludables. Porque los hospitales están llenos de niños y de personas grandes por las enfermedades del mojo.
I just ask you to support these very important recommendations. The hospitals are full of children who are sick from mold. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next three are Nancy Titus, Namkeisha Roper, and Carter Whitlock.
Excuse me, folks, but I have to leave. I'm turning over the rest of the presentations to the President of the Council, Commissioner Tausman.
And they'll be followed by Ari Rampkin, Nancy Swan, and Sarah Thompson.
Hi, Nancy Titus. I feel that two minutes to go through this is like writing the history of Oregon in 10 pages or less. It can be done, but a lot will be left out.
You've got two minutes.
I lived in a dive. The dive had black mold. The floor was brown when we moved in. When cleaned, it was yellow. It was $400 a month. Shelves were missing. There was four types of poisonous spiders. The back window broke out. The stove smoked so bad that you could not be in there and cook. The heater didn't work. The wires were melded. The thermostat was melded. There was three-pronged plug-ins that were not grounded. The fridge leaked water from the freezer into your food. The floor slanted one to two inches towards the center of the building. There was no smoke detectors. And the shower surround was broken and molded. The windows were all painted shut. There were no screens. The bathroom door did not shut. The toilet leaked water all over the floor. The front door was messed up and didn't shut properly. I replaced the stove, the toilets, and the shelves. I rebuilt the back window and put one in. The one they had was sitting on the window sill and held in place by two nails that were bent over. It had a crack of an inch and a half around the top. My daughter is disabled and I cannot work. This was the only place we could afford. After having the water turned off for non-payment, we found out that there were four houses on the same water meter and the owner was not paying it. After that, they started charging us for the water and the sewer, which was not in our lease, and for the garbage. We couldn't afford the increase and we had to move. One place was inspected. The other two, nobody would inspect them.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay. But they couldn't be inspected because they'd be kicked out and homeless. My daughter and I were homeless now.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Namkeisha Roper. I'm a renter and tenant of Portland. I'm here to support the recommendations of Quality Rental Housing Work Group. We all deserve a safe place to call home. I was a tenant at the Arbor Glen Apartments. I moved in August of 2007. My repair issues were cockroaches, mice, mold. I was forced to move, live with these problems because the management was negligent. Let's see. Me and my daughter stayed there. I was concerned for the health of my baby. My blood pressure is high and I do have heart conditions. It was made worse by the situation. I called city inspectors. After they were fined twice, they finally started to spray for the cockroaches. They didn't treat all the units around me, so the problem got worse. Let's see. I lost my job that I had for 10 years. I can't really express how much it really affected my life. I tried to exercise my rights as a tenant and I called the city. When I called the city, they retaliated by evicting me. Me and my baby were homeless for three months. Wow. Not only did we lose our home, let's see, I lost my job. I'm a little emotional about the whole thing all the time. So I'll wrap it up by saying we all deserve a safe and healthy place to call home. I do support the recommendation and I hope that you guys do as well. I thank you guys for listening to me and I hope that this doesn't happen to anybody else. I respect you guys respectfully. Namkeisha Roper.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good day, Commissioners. I'm Carter Whitlock. And a few years back, I moved into a small two-bedroom in a fourplex in southeast Portland with a roommate and a cat. We had this old gas-powered heater that took up a third of the living room, on the face of which was a sheet of glass providing a barrier between the open flames and the rest of the unit. It was winter and I was home from work and on the bed reading with a cat and I heard this pop out of the living room and some shattering glass. I ran out there and found shards of glass melted into the carpet and the furnace flames barely contained therein. I immediately turned down the gas-powered unit and called my landlord, who shortly after moving in, I found out was one of Portland's top 30 slum lords, according to a write-up by The Willamette Week. Anyhow, defensively, my landlord claimed that the cat had broken the glass on the heater, which the cat had been with me. But ultimately, my landlord said that he would replace the glass. As for the carpet, he made no implication of addressing this hazard. It took over a month for my landlord to replace the glass, during which time he encouraged my roommate and I to continue using the heater. Aside from the immediate fire hazard disposed to us and the building, occasionally the gas would stay stuck on so that even if you turned the dial all the way down, the gas would somehow continue flowing on a high flame. On several occasions, this occurred during the time that there was no glass barrier on the unit. I worried that the cat would somehow catch on fire. I worried that the apartment unit would catch on fire during our sleep or that the entire unit would blow up. I worried that my roommate and I would die in the middle of the night from carbon monoxide poisoning. We moved out about two months later, at which time the carpet still had not been repaired or replaced. That would not have been a safe environment for a young child. If you can imagine an infant crawling around on the floor with shards of glass embedded into the carpet, let alone an open flame. I'm embarrassed that I didn't know at the time of landlord-tenant laws, but I feel that had these recommendations and the higher fines and more severe penalties been in place at that time, perhaps my landlord would have felt more compelled and inclined to address these dwelling problems for the fear of the penalties or legal action against him. I also want to add that one other benefit of funding these recommendations is with our economy being such as it is, I think it could possibly provide a few more jobs in the Portland area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next three?
The last three who signed up are Ari Rampkin, Nancy Swan, and Sarah Thompson.
And Commissioner, thanks. My name is Ari Rampkin and we actually, we have written, at least Nancy and I have written testimony that we can just submit into her as well so we don't need to take up your medical time.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate that. Is there anybody here who did not sign up who wishes to testify? Okay, well, thank you. And we will now have the roll call on the resolution. Is Commissioner Fish in the house? Here he comes. Okay. Carla, please call the roll on the resolution.
Adams?
Well, I want to acknowledge and commend the leadership of Commissioners Leonard and Fish on this. I think it's very important work. The testimony has been very compelling and I appreciate our partners, our public and private, nonprofit, and advocacy partners in this effort. I'm happy to vote aye and look forward to our continued work together to improve the housing stock accommodations and availability in the years ahead. Aye.
Fish?
Well, I think Mike Alderman said it best today when he called this a win-win. And I want to congratulate all the parties that came together to produce this really fine piece of work. This required concessions by both landlords and tenants, and it required the hard work of people coming together with the goal of reaching consensus. We know how to, we know as in this community, how to be divided. It takes a lot of work to be united. And to come up with something like this, which is going to immeasurably improve the quality of lives of people in this community, is a testament to the good faith and hard work of everyone who was involved. There's a few people I'd like to thank, starting with the Quality Rental Housing Work Group members, and those that are still here. Would you please stand just so we can acknowledge you? Again, thank you for your service and you put enormous time and energy into this. Andrea Mathiason from BHCD. Andrea, thank you for your tireless work in bringing this to a successful conclusion. Joe Hertzberg from the Decisions/Decisions facilitation team. Joe, thanks for doing a great job as always. To the tenants who came out today and spoke so eloquently about the need for this important reform, thank you for taking the time and thank you for sharing your stories with us. To Tracy Leto of BHCD, job well done. To Ed Marahart of BDS, once again, outstanding. And to Steve Cass. To Commissioner Leonard and to the council in 2007 that launched this effort, I think they deserve a lot of credit. This took a little longer than was originally planned, but it was worth, I think, the wait. Because this is a balanced and thoughtful approach to a community-wide problem. And I would urge my colleagues not only today to adopt the report, which contains a lot of very sensible recommendations, but also commit at budget time to make this a priority item for funding. And I'm very pleased to vote aye.
Leonard?
A number of years ago, a police officer asked me what I could do to help them deal with an apartment house in northwest Portland that had been a generational problem for not only people that had lived in the apartments, but for officers and fire inspectors and trying to deal with the hazards there. And so there were instances of drug abuse and most troubling even victimized... And so there were instances of drug abuse and most troubling, even victimizing mentally ill people that lived there, all combined with the most horrendous living conditions one can imagine. And that began then, an effort five years ago that has seen now successfully go after five of these kinds of apartment houses. The latest and maybe the most notable is The Grove down on Burnside. And what I learned with, in going through each one of those buildings and bringing together the police bureau and the fire bureau and the housing folks in BHCD, is that these were problems that had been known literally for generations, that the owners of these properties had passed them on to succeeding generations. And while they certainly were culpable for their allowing of people to live in those conditions, the city had its share of culpability by not having the will to go in and basically challenge their threat that they would shut these places down if forced to make the corrections and then allowing people who had homes have no homes. The difference between what happened in each of those six cases in the past was we called them on their bluff and made them make the improvements and all of those buildings continued to provide housing in much better conditions. There is nothing that I have less patience about than irresponsible landlords that allow people to live in the conditions we heard testified here today. Some of the things that you may have read about me, I think, are untrue, but when they come to people being allowed to live in these conditions, some of the things said about me are understated. I have absolutely no patience and I'm absolutely unmoved by property owners who talk about costs or talk about how the impact is on them when they have the responsibility, when they own property, to make sure people live in humane conditions. So you certainly have my continued effort and commitment to make sure that we follow through on these excellent recommendations and make sure that people have an advocate in the city and that we don't somehow become complicit with bad property owners by not enforcing the code fully. So I appreciate all that was said here today and all the work that's been done to get us to this point. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I think back to 2007, a little bit earlier, when I know Ian Slingerland and members of the Community Alliance of Tenants met with me and talked about getting this work group going. And I would be remiss in not mentioning Commissioner Sten for the role he played in helping with Commissioner Leonard and to get this work group going. But as the conditions that you have described, the situations and the frustrations, the insecurities that tenants often face, have really driven home the case to me that we, this is a great report. These recommendations need to be implemented and they need to be funded so we can do the work necessary. And I think that it's really some of the conditions that landlords leave their properties in are deplorable. And I want to particularly recognize American Property Management and the kind words Commissioner Leonard said about you. There are responsible property owners out there who take this seriously and realize that, I think as Mr. Bricker said, that if you don't maintain your investment, it catches up with you. And in the meantime, you know, you leave people living in deplorable conditions. So these recommendations need to move forward, they need to be funded. I know a lot of you who testified today, but I also wanted to show you the postcards my office received, I'm betting all five offices received. It's a lot of postcards in support of this, so good job on your efforts. And I'm really pleased to support this and I just wanted to acknowledge again Ian Slingerland, who is moving on to the Housing Authority of Portland for all the great work that he's done in this effort too. Please to vote aye. So the resolution passes and thank you all. We move on to fifteen, our regular agenda, item 1594.
Declare that employee volunteer service in support of youth is within the mission of the City of Portland and all its bureaus and direct implementation activities.
Mayor Potter did have to leave, but he wanted me to read just briefly his, some of his remarks about this. This is something that was cosponsored by all five of us. But Mayor Potter's remarks are, "I'm very pleased to introduce this resolution, which will support and encourage City of Portland employees to volunteer their time on behalf of youth in our community. Many of us were concerned about the current state of our youth in Portland, including the reality that only 57% of them graduate from high school on time or at all. We know that a key strategy to help youth succeed is to provide relationships with positive adults who can help guide, connect, and inspire these young people to reach for their dreams. Under this resolution, which builds on the existing Human Resources Administrative Rule, an employee may choose to read books to a youth at a local school, coach a sports team, serve as a mentor, or do other services in support of youth. In June, the City Council charged the Office of Management and Finance to initiate a pilot program to assess whether this would be an incentive to increase volunteerism, as well as to evaluate any limitations or barriers to large-scale expansion of this program." So what we have before us this morning, or this afternoon now, is the result of that good work. As Mayor Potter, as I said, every member of council has cosponsored this and we're now going to ask Nate Waschul and Laurel Butman to come up and provide us on the results of the pilot project and recommendations for moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Saltzman and council. I'm Nate Waschul from the Office of Mayor Potter. And in my brief remarks, what I will do is highlight the benefits of an employee volunteer program and also talk about some of the experience of other public jurisdictions who've taken similar steps to allow volunteerism on behalf of their employees. VolunteerMatch.org, a national clearinghouse for volunteerism cites several recent studies that demonstrate that employee volunteer programs have concrete benefits, not only for the community, but also for the employer and for employees. Benefits to the community are clear, as an expanded pool of volunteers becomes available to help meet the crucial needs of a community. But benefits also, but employers also benefit from these programs. Studies have found recently that heightened employee morale, productivity, and retention are all results that are correlated with employee volunteer programs, as well as opportunities for increased community partnerships and an enhanced public image for that employer. Finally, employees benefit from increased variety, fulfillment, and sense of purpose in their daily work and also from expanded opportunities for leadership and interpersonal skill development as they contribute their talents to the needs that they see in their community in a way that they choose. Although private sector employee volunteer programs may be more well-known to many of us, public jurisdictions across the county have also, excuse me, across the country, have also shown leadership in building and in sustaining employee volunteer programs. Portland is poised to join cities like Dallas, Sacramento, and St. Petersburg, Florida, in offering paid time to employees specifically for volunteering in support of young people. More than 15 states have also instituted similar policies. Those include Arizona, California, New Jersey, North Carolina, and several others. It's clear that companies and government bodies across the nation are recognizing that the success of our youth equals the success of our community and that when young people fall behind, we all suffer. Mentoring, tutoring, coaching, reading to young people, or simply spending time with them can quite simply change lives. This resolution helps equip City of Portland employees to become that change in the lives of hundreds, perhaps thousands, of local youth. Now I'd like to turn it over to Laurel Butman from the Office of Management and Finance, who will highlight the findings of a recent pilot program to measure this possibility here in Portland, as well as to explain the recommendations moving ahead.
Thanks, Nate. Laurel Butman, Office of Management and Finance. The City to Youth Pilot Program launched last June and was concluded just at the end of October. City to Youth allowed eligible city employees in up to four hours of paid work time each month to volunteer with Portland youth. Participation in the pilot program was limited to non-represented employees in the bureaus with the Office of Sustainable Development, the Bureau of Housing and Community Development, the Water Bureau, the Bureau of Planning, OMF Business Operations, and the Mayor's Office and Council Offices. Supervisory approval was required and participation could not negatively impact any work activities. The City to Youth staff team marketed the program to employees in the pilot bureaus, maintaining a program website and online registration process and networking with partner volunteer organizations. Program staff conducted a midpoint survey of employees in the pilot bureaus and I'd like to share just a few results of the survey and staff experience during the pilot. We found that the marketing efforts that we undertook were very successful. Regular emails and occasional brown bag sessions with volunteer organizations proved very effective and efficient. Greater flexibility was desired in terms of paperwork and registration. However, there is still a need for ongoing work in the areas of tracking and marketing. The resolution before you addresses these findings and reduces the administrative oversight and paperwork involved, so program costs can be covered within existing budgets. This resolution provides that the City to Youth program would be reestablished under the Mayor's Office. The website would continue as a resource maintained by the Office of Management and Finance. The Mayor's Office and OMF will continue to partner on email marketing and occasional brown bag events. And tracking would include two data points. We'll have bureaus report how many employees are involved in the program and approved to work with youth during, volunteer with the youth during work hours, and we'll continue to use a payroll code to track the actual hours served by employees citywide. And finally, we will come back to you in a year's time to report on progress and outcomes and any recommendations we have at that point. That's really all I wanted to let you know about today. I wanted to open it to questions and then we have a couple of people from the bureaus who want to speak.
What were the types of activities people volunteered for?
Oh, people are, well...
Organizations or organizations?
Organizations, really. Schools, you know, especially because if they've got a child in school, they can go work in classroom. But also, SMART has a lot of volunteers and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. There are several other mentoring programs as well and we have Organ mentors as a key partner in this. So there were just many different options that people took.
We'll have a chance to hear from one bureau employee immediately following this who's a big sister.
Yeah.
To a girl here in the community.
Right. Any other questions?
Okay, so I'd like to invite Valerie Garrett from Office of Sustainable Development and Gray Oberhausen from the Bureau of Planning to come up and say a few words.
Welcome. If you could just give us your name and each have two minutes.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Valerie Garrett and I'm a green building specialist with the Office of Sustainable Development and I'm a big sister as well. So I was very excited to see when this program showed up and I got the email about it because I had been a big sister for about three years previously and my little sister moved away. Her family stabilized and she didn't need me as much in her life anymore. So I took a break and then seeing this program come up, the City to Youth program, really made me think again that I could be involved in a child's life and I really wanted to sign up again. So it just jogged my memory that I really wanted to do that. And I'm passing around a couple of pictures of Enrique, my little brother. He looks like he's about nine or 10, but he's actually going to be 14 in January. He was born with fetal alcohol syndrome. He was abandoned by his mother. He lives in foster care with a couple of chinchillas, a dog, a couple turtles, and now two goats. So, and some toddlers. So he has a lot of competition for affection and one-on-one time and I feel like being a big sister to him, I can really help him with consistency being there. I see him every week for three hours a week through this program and it's one-on-one time for him. He doesn't need to fight with anybody for my attention, it's just for him. And we do great things together, like go bowling, go to the arcade. He's never seen the ocean, I'm going to take him to the ocean. And it's just, it's just really great for me. I just, I just love him to pieces and we've been together two months and it's a one-year commitment and I'm looking forward to all the time I get to spend with him. So thank you for, you know, allowing this to be and I think it's a great program and our children are best local, regional renewable resource and we need to invest in them. So I'm very happy to do this and a lot of my coworkers are involved as well, so.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you. Just give us your name and...
Yeah, I'm Gray Oberhausen and I work at the Bureau of Planning and the Youth Planning Program. And I'm going to talk a little bit about just people that have supported me during my teen years in high school and the ways that it's benefited me. I think the person that probably has affected me most was someone, actually my school counselor in high school. And they were paid staff, so it's a little bit different, but in a lot of ways, they went above and beyond to support me in different ways. So during high school, I actually went Franklin High School and I identify as a queer youth. And so being queer and in high school is actually quite a difficult thing and you can get a lot of harassment and different things like that. And my high school counselor was someone that I could always go to with any struggles or problems I was having. And it was certainly a struggle. I would have days where I didn't want to go to school or I wanted to leave class because I felt literally, you know, afraid to be in school because there's definite dangers to being queer in high school. I could always, always go to that person with all of these different struggles that I was having and they would set aside whatever they were doing and just talk to me and help me. And they were the first person to ever refer me to the Sexual Minority Youth Resource Center, which is a queer youth resource center that I go to in Portland. And that was another place where I met many really great adult mentors and just people that I looked up to. And actually at SMERC, I gained a lot of the different skills that I then needed to get a job here at the city with different leadership skills and all sorts of things like that. And anytime that I had any questions or needed support in any way, I always had people to go to because we always had many, many volunteers at SMERC. Another thing that my high school counselor did is when I was struggling so much in school, they actually helped me to finish classes and helped me when my grades were not great and they helped me get into classes that they knew I would like, with teachers they knew I would like. And when it came towards the end of my high school career, I really wanted and kind of needed to graduate early and they helped me do that as well by getting me into summer school and other things like that. So they were actually able to support me to not only graduate, but to graduate a year earlier than all of my peers, which was really important. So it's been a really important thing to have these adult role models in my life and I think it would be really amazing to have me and other city employees be able to give back in that same way and then do this for other youth to build future youth leaders for our city.
Well, thank you both. And Valerie, we really appreciate your testimony and now you have that opportunity to give back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Did we have anybody signed up to testify?
No one else signed up.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll call the roll. The resolution.
Fish?
Well, first I want to, excuse me. I think half the people here today have been sick or in various stages of having the same crud. Thank you, Nate and Laurel, once again, and all the others who've participated in this pilot project. And I wholeheartedly endorse the concept which you so passionately put into work every day, that the success of youth equals the success of our community. And what a great opportunity to serve not only the youth in our community, but also encourage volunteerism. And on that note, Commissioner Jeff Cogan from Altoma County and I have started a program through Hands-on Portland, Hands-on Greater Portland with the Internet Portal, which is called the Two Commissioners Service Opportunity. And every two months, you have a chance to come out with us to do a project. We've targeted outer East Portland as the area of opportunity. And we figure whether people come out to volunteer or just to kavetch, you know, if it helps generate enthusiasm. And we had about 35 or 40 people who showed up in East Portland at an elementary school to paint it on Saturday. And what was really interesting was 10 of the kids who showed up were Lincoln High School students from the other side of the river who have their own service club and are looking for opportunities. So, you know, this is a wonderful chance for city employees and all of us to have an impact through volunteerism. And I couldn't help but think when we honored this morning the young men and women from Grant and Lincoln and Portland Christian School or Academy?
Portland Christian School.
Portland Christian School, that they were the epitome of what happens when young people are nurtured, in this case by good teachers, by very dedicated coaches, and obviously by some adult in their life, a loving, caring adult, whoever that may be. You put those people together, it's a heck of a combination and we saw it in the young people that we honored this morning. So thanks again for your leadership on this and all the other issues involving youth and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Leonard?
I appreciate all the good work. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I appreciate the positive results so far from the pilot and I look forward to this becoming more expansive through the city. So good work. It's very important to have positive role models for kids, no doubt about it. And in that spirit, I just want to recognize Elizabeth Ny from Big Brothers, Big Sisters and I know we have several other people from Big Brothers, Big Sisters who, in my opinion... I also wanted to say that during the campaign to renew the Children's Levy, we had several Big Brothers and Big Sisters along with their little brothers and little sisters going out door-to-door on behalf of the renewal of the Children's Levy. And I'm sure that was a very, very powerful message for voters to see, some of the great little brothers and little sisters out there. So again, this is a great program and I'm pleased to support it. Aye.
So the resolution passes and next item 1595.
Authorize the...
Second reading, vote only, yeah.
1595, authorize the Bureau of Housing and Community Development to contract for winter warming centers for families and the medically vulnerable and provide funding to support existing winter shelter.
Let's vote. Follow me.
Second read.
Thank you. As I indicated last week, this is something of a historic action taken by the council in that it acknowledges that we can both support and fully fund the tenure plan to end homelessness, which is a plan to move chronically homeless people off the street and into permanent supportive housing, and recognize that we have an obligation to maintain a social safety net for people who are on the street for whom we do not have housing, permanent housing units yet available. That the old paradigm of either/or has been broken and that we now understand we can have both. In fact, we have an obligation to provide both. I want to thank Commissioner Leonard for partnering with me on this issue and the council for putting new resources into this initiative. And I want to once again remind people that we are not diverting any existing dollars in the system to the warming centers. These are new dollars. And I hope we can build on this spirit of collaboration going forward. Aye.
Leonard.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Okay, 1596.
Authorize settlement agreement with Rocky Balada regarding disability benefit and employment claims.
Mayor Potter has asked that this be referred back to his office, so without objection, that's what will happen. Oh, I'm sorry, 1597.
Read the title.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the Port of Portland for the distribution of equipment, supplies, and services procured as a result of urban areas security initiative grant awards.
Okay, well, I guess Commissioner Adams is coming back in 10 minutes or can somebody go see if he's in his office? Because we have several emergencies.
Can we skip over the emergency...
Let's skip and come back to it when he comes back.
Okay.
He's conducting another meeting.
Okay, because we do have several emergency ordinances.
Okay, I didn't hear he was coming back. He's coming back?
Yes.
All right. Well, can somebody determine that?
Yeah. Can we just... We need four people.
We can go to the other ones. Do you want to move to 1598 now?
Uh, yes.
1598, adopt the budget calendar for fiscal year 2009-10.
It's my understanding Mayor Potter wanted this referred back to his office in case he has something else.
Correct. No, I wanted to say that Mayor Potter had asked to refer this back to his office and it'll come back next week.
Okay, without objection, that will happen. Okay, 1599.
Amend accounting procedure and financial management policy and procedures for services performed for private persons or governmental agencies for the interdepartmental services.
Casey Short, Financial Planning Manager. What this item before you is, is a very nuts and bolts ordinance. It deals with overhead rates charged by city bureaus. Specifically, it amends the code to have OMF set these rates on an annual basis rather than have the bureaus develop them and submit them to their commissioner in charge for approval in the interest of the hour. I'll be very brief in my summary comments. These rates are going to be set based on federal guidelines for overhead recovery and they will be developed in conjunction with the bureaus. We had an interbureau work team work to develop the guidelines, the criteria on which overhead would be calculated. And this is coming forward to you to amend the code and amend a couple of points in the comprehensive financial management policies. The rates themselves are close to being finalized. We still have a little fine tuning to do. These will be the rates that will go into effect for fiscal '09-10 and establish one rate per bureau instead of multiple rates per bureau and will establish a consistent methodology for doing this. I have more I could say, but I'll leave it at that and ask if there are any questions.
Casey, this sounds like a technical matter, but if there, at some point in the future was a dispute involving a particular bureau and the rate, would it still come back to us?
The code doesn't specifically provide for that, but it could or we could have a dispute resolution process. I think that how we will deal with it is that we have the criteria in place, what will be included and what will not. And we have been able so far to work with the bureaus in determining these things. Those are kind of the, a couple of the fine tune points that need to be worked out for next year. And I would think that the process could also address that. One of the things we need to do as a follow-up to this item is include the procedure in the financial policies, procedures that speak to how these things are going to be developed and we could address that in those procedures.
Further questions? So this is a first reading, so it moves to second reading. What do we know about Commissioner Adams?
Trying to find him.
His office is trying to find him?
I think it's a pretty rough...
Well, so how many people do we have here tomorrow at 2:00?
I believe everybody. I show everybody currently here at 2:00 tomorrow.
Everybody's going to be here?
We've got 1601 to do.
I know, okay. So let's do 16. I guess we'll put the emergencies off until 2:00 tomorrow.
Titles.
There he is. All right. Okay, so let's go back to, well, we have seven. Okay, let's go back to 1597.
Authorize...
It's already been read. Okay.
It's been read.
Thanks, Commissioners. Harman Merlo, Office of Emergency Management. This ordinance corrects a sub-granting problem that we currently have for the pass-through of our urban area security initiative grant funds. Right now, we only have IGAs with the five counties. For Trimate and the Port of Portland, which are special districts, we've had to first grant, first do a sub-grant with the county, then they would sub-grant to the port or Trimate. This creates a huge backlog delaying and getting reimbursements to them and awarding grant funds out. So what this ordinance does is establish a direct relationship between the City of Portland and the port, similar to the ordinance you heard a few weeks ago for Trimate.
Questions? Okay, anybody wish to testify on this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Adams.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
We'll now move to 1601. Oh, I'm sorry, 1600, also emergency.
Authorize an agreement with the City of Portland Professional Employees Association for terms and conditions of employment for certain represented employees.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Patrick Ward with the Bureau of Human Resources. The ordinance had authorized a memorandum of agreement between the city and the association to extend the terms and conditions of our current labor agreement to the classification of environmental policy analysts. This agreement meets the bargaining interests of the city by maintaining the current rate of pay for the classification. Bureau recommends approval.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody wish to testify?
No one signed up.
No one signed up? Okay, please call the roll.
Adams.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
For the sake of getting our emergency ordinances done, I'm going to skip over 1601 and go to 1602, 03, 04, 05. I promise you I'll be here for 1601.
1602. Amen contract...
Two others, yes.
Amen contract with SAP, Public Services, Inc., to provide post-implementation Go Live stabilization support services for the Enterprise Business Solution Project.
Jennifer Sims, Office of Management and Finance. I'm here today pleased to report that the Enterprise Business Solution Project is on schedule for Phase One Finance and Logistics Go Live on November 1st, which is only, or November 27th, which is only eight days away. This will be the culmination of a multi-year project involving hundreds of employees and touching every bureau. So today I'm here requesting you to authorize an amendment to our contract 376969 with our implementation partner SAP, Public Services Incorporated, to provide post-Go Live stabilization support services. This contract amendment will retain the SAP team onsite for two months after the Go Live to ensure that the software is and the system are functioning as designed. And SAP will ensure that city employees attain the skills, knowledge, and self-sufficiency to support the new system on an ongoing basis. In addition, this contract amendment will provide stabilization support services for the second phase Go Live in April of 2009. Finally, the total amendment is for $1,866,912, which is the adopted budget amount. This action was taken last week to include it in the budget, so it was adopted with the bump and is already covered.
Anybody wish to testify?
No one else signed up.
Please call the roll.
Adams.
We're on time on budget.
We are.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Look forward to everything going smoothly on the 27th. Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, 1603.
Amen contract with Parkyon, Inc., to extend and increase the contract amount for monthly reporting service for parking pay stations.
I'm only here to answer questions if we have them. This is...
You've earned my vote.
Thank you.
This is a good thing, not a bad thing.
Yeah. It's a little cleanup in terms of our...
I'm getting dicey.
Yeah. It's a little cleanup ordinance.
It might be, no.
Paying attention to the man behind the desk. I think we're ready to roll.
Yeah. Any questions? Okay.
We called all of your offices anyway and provided.
Thanks, Sue. Okay, Carla, please call the roll.
No one signed up.
Oh, yeah.
Back to you, yes.
Adams.
He just wants this short.
Aye.
Fish.
Hey, Sue, thanks for repaving Knott Street between MLK and about 32nd.
We did it just for you, Commissioner.
It makes it a little easier to get home at night.
Anything to make you happy.
Really appreciate it.
Leonard.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
We consider you a friend, we'll do your street.
Thank you.
Okay, 1604, our second to the last emergency item.
That was actually random.
Authorize a grant agreement with Campfire USA not to exceed $88,434 to provide out-of-school time programming to City of Portland youth.
This is previously authorized by the council and this just releases the money.
Okay, anybody wish to testify? Okay, please call the roll.
No one signed up.
Did you all see that? I'll wait just one second.
Adams?
That was the shortest introduction in Commissioner Leonard's legislative council history. Aye.
Fish.
I think, I think that Commissioner Leonard's proximity to me has begun to wear off. I think he's, he's learning that economy doesn't, doesn't mean we have to sacrifice content.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Okay, 1605.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement between the Bureau of Parks and Portland Development Commission to acquire approximately four acres of property in the Gateway Regional Center Urban Renewal District.
Okay, this is the ordinance that has been amended as requested by the council at our November 5th council meeting for the acquisition of new parkland in the Gateway area. It will require a new independent appraisal before negotiations on a purchase price can begin. And it also will require the approval of the negotiated purchase by a majority of the city council before the property can be purchased. I urge council's support. Questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
I did not have a sign sheet for this. Adams?
Thanks to Commissioner Saltzman for the amendments. I think this is great. Let's go get it at a good price. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Leonard.
And I want to begin by thanking, oh, never mind. Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Okay, that completes our emergency, so we have one item left, so if we could just have three of you. 1601, the sustainable purchase.
Accept the City of Portland Sustainable Paper Use Policy 2008 Final Citywide Report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jeff Baer with Bureau of Purchases and with me is Stacy Foreman, who is our Sustainable Program Coordinator. And I have to say, I haven't had the privilege of emptying the chambers before, but I guess I am now. I do want to thank Stacy for her work in pulling this information together and as you can imagine, coordinating and pulling this information on a citywide basis of our paper use is no small task. And before you is our final 2008 Sustainable Paper Use Policy Report that really highlights a number of activities that we started with back in '03, which was to reduce our paper consumption and to increase the use of our recycled content paper within our city operations. And even though we didn't reach our goal of reducing our paper consumption by 15%, we did make significant improvements in reducing the use of non-recycled paper content and dramatically increased our use of 100% post-consumer waste paper, which significantly reduces our environmental impact in terms of using non-recycled paper. So with that, I'll just pause. If you have any questions about the report, glad to answer any that you might have.
Our Commissioner Fish is gone, so.
This will be speedy.
Well, I do want to say it's very impressive what you just said. I mean, it looks like we've substantially increased our use of post-consumer waste recycled paper. That's great.
We need lunch.
Okay.
We're getting light headed.
I guess there's no questions, but thank you for the good work, though.
Thank you for your good work. Excellent. I like my reusable paper tray that we can now feed it right into the laser printer.
So this is a report. I need a motion to accept the report?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll. Since there's nobody left in the chamber, I assume nobody's going to testify on this.
Adams.
Although we're speeding through this, I want to thank you for your really good work. This is a great way for us to walk our talk on sustainability and green, so thank you. Aye.
Thank you.
Leonard. Saltzman.
Again, good work. Aye. Okay, we're adjourned until 2:00 tomorrow.